We're going to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting complies with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting has been published on the municipal bulletin board and in the appropriate newspapers.
Good evening, everyone. Board members, as you can see, we have a new recording secretary, Ms. Kathleen Bibsa. I actually need a motion and a second to officially appoint her, please.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You can, everybody can vote on Ms. Kathleen.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Mr. Hudeck?
Yes.
Ms. Parnes?
She's absent.
Oh, she's out, too. Sorry. Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Sutch?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. Welcome aboard. And now to make it official, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hyman?
Here.
Dr. Hofstein?
Here.
Mr. Hudeck?
Here.
Ms. Rosal?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Present.
Mr. Sutch?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here. Ms. Cipriani, do we have any resolutions this evening?
We do not.
Okay. And do we have any minutes this evening?
I have not seen any, no.
Okay. Do we have a voucher for this evening, Kathleen? Okay, I'll take that. Thank you. All right, so we have a voucher for our recording secretary for this evening from the township of Jackson in the amount of $175. I need a motion and a second, please. Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Mr. Hudeck?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Sutch?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes. Okay. Do we have any announcements this evening, Ms. Cipriani?
Yes, number three on the agenda, JCP and L, which has been carried, so we had testimony on February 19th, and is now going to be carried to the May 7th meeting with no additional notice.
And we need to swear in our professionals for this evening?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear that the testimony that you will give to this board this evening will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please hit your name and position for the record.
Mark Romeyer, board engineer.
Ernie Peters, board planner.
Jackie Jordan, planning and zoning.
Do we, no executive session this evening? Any matters for discussion or administrative approvals?
None.
All right, we're going to move forward to applicant number one, Ave Partners LLC. This is for preliminary and final site plan 918 with use variance 3497. Mr. Pape?
Yes.
And just for the record, Mr. Martins has stepped off the dais. He's recused himself due to a conflict with this application, so we will have six voters for this evening. So Kathy, Mr. Martins won't be voting, and obviously Shear is not here.
Am I, I'm live. I'm very good.
Yes.
Madam Chair, board members, board professionals, and public, good evening. My name is Kenneth Pape. I'm the attorney for your applicant this evening. This is a continued hearing. This matter began before this board in June of 2024, and where there was substantial testimony placed on the record. It was continued to September, where again, the full evening was used for the presentation to the board. And at the September meeting, as the evening got late, there was an agreement to allow, I think the last half hour, to the public to comment with the understanding that they could return. All of the fact witnesses had concluded their testimony. The architect, and the traffic engineer, and the design engineer had concluded their testimony. There was a discussion amongst the board members and the public about the driveway system, and there was a suggestion that came, I believe, first from the public and then was discussed by the board, and that was to change the driveway system so that the truck movements would be on the opposite side of the site, as far away from lot eight as possible. In November, we submitted a revised circulation plan. Unfortunately, for the board, for the applicant, and the public, that plan was filed too late to be heard at the November meeting. Your counsel directed that we could not proceed. I think there was a similar late filing by Mr. Paul Revere, and we were all sent home with a new hearing date. We, this evening, we intend to present that revised circulation plan, and I'll call Mr. Intilly for approximately five minutes to just have him introduce that to the board. It, because it is a revision to the circulation plan, our traffic expert, Mr. John Ray, will then take the stand and spend a few minutes just to confirm that the plan is, remains adequate and safe for all of the anticipated onsite circulation movements. Those two fact witnesses, I anticipate, can be presented in about 10 minutes. And then we do have our planner's testimony to present to the board. Two comments. One, I want to apologize to the board and to the public. I've been doing this for just about 45 years. I have never missed a hearing, ever, until the meeting in January where I was not well, and I apologize to you for not being here and for the inconvenience that it may have caused anyone. There was nothing I could do about it. And the second is, if, we have six members, so Madam Chair, I won't ask for a vote this evening. I'm going to, I want to have a board of seven. But can we begin with an understanding of, of the six members of the board that are present? How many are qualified at this time? There's always time to become qualified, but how many are qualified to vote on this application, beginning with the June, June hearing?
All of them.
Thank you. What, I think, everyone, I thank you for taking that extra step to be, be qualified. Then with your permission, Madam Chair, I'll call Michael Intilly. We'll introduce the exhibit that was filed in November, which is a revision to the circulation, as that he described it to the board.
Mr. Intilly, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear that the testimony you'll give to this board this evening will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you please state your name and qualifications for the record?
Michael Intilly, professional engineer and planner, State of New Jersey since 1990, a principal with Crest Engineering Associates.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Intilly, but my understanding is that you provided testimony in this matter previously, is that correct?
Yes, I have.
And the board has accepted your credentials?
Many times. Thank you very much.
One of us needs to remind him that he's under oath.
I'm going to leave that to you.
Mr. Intilly, I remind you that you're under oath, and I'll ask if you could identify the exhibit that you are presenting to the board by title, and then tell us what that exhibit shows.
Yes, this is exhibit, concept plan, contractor's yard, east entrance. And what it basically is, is, as Kenan mentioned, we were asked to provide the entrance for the truck traffic as far east as we could, as, as edited from the original application. The original application had this truck entrance on this side, which is the west side. So what we did, we, we took a look at the best way to lay this property out again with the parking and the best circulation, and provide that driveway as far east as we could. And so what you see here is the eastern driveway moved over, and that's dedicated for the truck traffic. So the vehicles entering the site for, exclusively for the contractor's yard, would be going in and out of that entrance. There's a second entrance that we had left on the west side, I mentioned, and that is for the office traffic, parking, ingress and egress out of that entrance. You notice that it is open between the contractor's drive aisle and then the remainder of the parking, and that's just good design. Good for fire, good for circulation, so we left that the way it is. Other than that, there's no changes to the plan. The impervious areas are the same, the developed area is the same, stormwater management is exactly the same.
I thank you. I have nothing further. Mr. Intilly, I wanted this plan to be presented to the board for your consideration. We believe it's a good plan. We would look to the board as to whether they find this, this plan to be superior to the original submission, which had all of the traffic coming in at the eastern side of the property.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pape, I just want to make sure it's clear for the record. So is it the position of the applicant that you would proceed with either the original access plan or with this revised access plan at the board's discretion?
Counsel, yes. We do believe that the recommendation that came from the board and from the public to modify the driveways was an excellent idea. We were prepared to adopt it, but I don't want to superimpose our conclusions on yours. We're prepared to adopt it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mr. Intilly? Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to clarify, at this point, this is a conceptual layout, and it hasn't been fully engineered in a formal site plan, is that correct?
That's correct.
So it, just so the board's aware, if, if the board looks favorably upon this layout, a final site plan would then have to come back. Is that correct?
We agree.
That is correct.
We, we have three applications pending before you, a use variance, a preliminary, and a final. And, well, clearly this evening, we're not going to ask you to vote, but if you voted on use variance or preliminary and withheld final, we would understand the, the reasons that were just explained.
And Mr. Intilly, if you can please confirm, you stated the impervious coverage on this layout is very similar, if not identical, to the previous layout, and therefore you, is it accurate to say you would anticipate no major changes to the layout of the site, especially the stormwater?
It would be accurate to say that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I do have Mr. John Ray here, just, yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. If, is Mr. Intilly completed his testimony?
He has.
Then I believe that there is an objector present, so I want to give the objector the opportunity to question Mr. Intilly.
My name is Paul Revere. I'm the homeowner of this property right there.
Mr. Revere?
Thank you, Mr. Revere.
I just need you to speak English.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so first of all, Mr. Revere, two things, and, and I know that you have participated. First of all, I'd like to swear you.
Oh, sure. Did, did you want to swear me in, you said?
I do.
Sure, no problem.
And do you swear that the, any testimony you give to this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, everything I say will be the truth.
Thank you. And I also want to be clear, at this time, right now, the only thing that you're here to do is to question Mr. Intilly on the testimony he just gave. Obviously, you will have the opportunity to make full comments at a later stage in the proceeding.
Yes, I understand. I appreciate your guidance. Now, but to clarify what you just said, he just presented this, this, this drawing right here, and I'm not allowed to ask questions on that drawing?
No, what I'm saying is that you are allowed to ask Mr. Intilly questions about what he presented, and that is
Okay.
this portion of the proceedings.
All right, well.
So yes, you could ask some questions on that.
My question to the board, and I've been trying, I've been here many times.
Okay, right now, it's not a question to the board.
Well, my, my question, and I, and I'll, what was your first name, sir? Michael, Michael, my question, and which I've asked it several times, and I've never been able to get an answer, is what kind of vehicles are going to be going in and out of that site, other than the office?
That testimony was placed on the record at the meeting in June by Esme Severino, who was a representative of the company. And the testimony was that they, they engaged in heavy construction, and they anticipated that there would be tandem trucks and trucks like that going to the site for maintenance in the garage.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Okay, now, when we first had our first hearing, and you, we had huge excavator machines and wheeled earth movers there. Are those the kind of vehicles that are going to be there?
Vehicles that Mr. Revere is describing were two vehicles that the owner placed at the driveway to prevent vandalism that had been, and dumping that had been occurring. When, when those vehicles were found to be objectionable, he promptly removed them from the site. Those vehicles will not be driving in and out of the property.
Okay, so I had to, now, the, the applicant, or whoever it was, was operating a construction yard there. I had to write a letter to the town, and they, they moved those, they, they were in violation. They were doing it illegally.
Yep, Mr. Revere, sorry, Mr. Pape just said that-
He's saying things that are not cor- I'm sorry, ma'am, but she's saying things that are not correct.
Okay, but I just wanted to remind you that this is a time for you to make, to ask questions, so you will have the opportunity to make those comments later on.
Okay.
So if you have a question that you want to ask-
Okay, so did you-
Based on Mr. Intilly's testimony.
To clarify what you just said, I don't know who's speaking for who, but do those big excavation machines and, and wheeled earth movers, they, will they be a part of this operation or not?
I believe that currently the questions are to be to Mr. Intilly, and Mr. Intilly's testimony was with regard to the design of two driveways.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
So, I'm sorry, sir, just because it's easier to hear me, I think, I hope. With your, what Mr. Pape was saying is that right now, the question is only to Mr. Intilly, who just testified about this plan. So I, I, I think that, that the questions that you're asking have been answered by Mr. Pape, but if you could, right now, limit your questions to, do you have any questions for Mr. Intilly? The end, on this plan that he just presented and his five minutes of testimony.
Okay, well, let's talk about the statement of operations.
No.
No?
No, right now, we're only-
Because the statement of operation dictates this whole piece of property.
Excuse me.
Right.
The only thing we're discussing now is Mr. Intilly's testimony this evening about the drawing on the board. You will have an opportunity to ask questions later.
Well, you have, to ask, to, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions of every witness, as I believe you have had previously. Right now-
I really haven't had the opportunity to ask any questions, believe me- Believe me, I've been shut down, like, you know, really hard.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that, but I could tell you for tonight, well, we're going to do it exactly the way, you'll have the opportunity to question each witness on that witness's testimony.
Okay.
So Mr. Intilly testified and introduced this plan, and whatever general thing you have a question about this plan.
Okay, Mike, how wide is this road in front of the site?
How wide is the road?
No testimony this evening with regard to the right-of-way width. The testimony this evening by Mr. Intilly is just on two internal driveways.
Mr. Pape, I appreciate the limitations, and I am aware of the need to keep things tight. However, Mr. Intilly did present the plan. I'm going to allow Mr. Revere to ask a couple of questions regarding the plan.
The current edge of pavement is about 16 feet from the center line of the road.
All right, so the total width of the road is about 32 feet?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, were you aware that there's a guardrail going along the whole width of that site on the opposite side of the, on that road?
We do have survey information for all the facility on the roadway, and we'll be addressing all of that, including the curbing, the pavement, the drainage, the guide rail, when we make the full application to Ocean County Planted and...
You kind of answered the question a little roundabout, but are you aware that there is a guardrail on the opposite side of that site, on the opposite side of the road?
If it's on our survey, then we have, we have information on it.
Okay, so that makes it so people cannot veer off the road, there's no side road on that, there's no side leeway on that side of the road, on this side, right here, okay? There's a guardrail all the way up, all the way down. So that...
Mr. Revere, I'm sorry, what is your question?
Oh, was that you? Okay, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Just saying, what is your question?
The question is, is he aware that there's a guardrail on the opposite side of that site, and there's no shoulder to that road?
He had testified that if it's on the guardrails on survey, then they are aware of it.
Okay, so you're aware of that. And what is your, in terms of a rig entering and exiting that site, these rigs, how long are these rigs?
The testimony of Ms. Severino is part of the record. The testimony of Ms. Severino was placed at the outset of the meeting in June, and she stated that the vehicles that were anticipating to come to the site are dump trucks, and there may be some smaller lightweight trucks that come to the site for maintenance. That's the testimony of the vehicles, and we stand by the testimony that's made part of the record.
So will that be a stipulation in the application? Because my history and my experience that they're already using, they were already using the lot for these monster machines.
So, thank you, Mr. Revere, you have made that point, I know the board has heard it. If there are any conditions that are going to be put on it, will be put on by the board, should they approve the application and desire to put in the conditions, I think you've made the point on that. I'm going to ask you if you have one more question for Mr. Intilly, because the next witness, I believe, is going to be the traffic engineer, so some of these opportunities will, these topics can be covered then.
Mr. Santilli, these lines up here that I'm pointing to, what are they?
Contour lines.
All right, I'll do it again. Those lines, what are they?
They're contour lines.
What are they?
They're called contour lines.
They're contour?
They're evidence of consistent elevation along the ground, 100, 101, 102.
Now, I don't see any wetlands delineation. Out of, how many acres is this property?
29.9 acres. This, if I may, that...
And how many acres are wetlands?
There are 26.2. Leaves us about 2.7 acres of developable upland.
All right, so there's 2, 2.7, 2 and 1/2 acres, but we really don't know that. Do we have a wetlands delineation on this property?
We do. We have been to the State of New Jersey for our wetlands delineation and permits. We did receive those permits. They have been actually filed as conservation easements to the wetlands and the wetlands buffers.
Okay, well, be careful what you say. I mean, what date did you do that?
Mr. Revere, Mr. Revere, sorry. You, honestly, you're questioning Mr. Intilly well beyond the subject of his testimony. As you're getting into, no, I'm going to, I'm going to just finish what I'm going to say to make a clean record.
All right, so can I ask?
No, 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 I'm still finishing what I'm going to say, which is that he had testified, this is the stage where you could ask questions about his testimony, you have asked him questions, and he has answered them regarding topics beyond his testimony. There will be other witnesses provided, to the extent that you asked about the wetlands delineation. He answers that that had been obtained, and if there's additional questions or comments that you want to make regarding wetlands delineation, which is beyond the scope of what his testimony was, you will have that opportunity.
Okay, can I ask what date they were obtained?
Okay, that will be your final question to Mr. Intilly.
Okay, what date did you get the wetlands delineation from New Jersey DEP?
On April 1st, 2012, the conservation easements for the wetlands and wetlands buffer were filed in the county.
Thank you.
Those have expired, they're not, they don't exist anymore. So I just want to let everybody know that what he's saying is fictitious, and I have a letter from New Jersey, okay?
And when it's time for you to put on your case as an objector, you will be able to provide that letter.
All right. I don't appreciate people trying to pull things on people, and that's what is happening.
You're welcome. Mr. Pape?
With permission, may we call Mr. Ray? Yes? Thank you. Mr. Ray also testified, and his credentials were placed on the record. I think his credentials went on at the June 19th meeting. So I'll remind him that he is under oath, and ask that the board acknowledge that his credentials are part of the record. Mr. Ray, you're, I remind you...
Do I get sworn in again, or?
No, Mr....
Takes five seconds.
Mr. Pape and I will remind you that you're under oath, remain under oath.
Thank you.
Mr. Intilly has introduced to the board and the public a revision to the onsite circulation, and your qualifications as a traffic engineer. I'm going to ask first, were you aware of these revisions, and did your firm participate with Mr. Intilly in its design?
Yes, we were aware of the revisions, and we did participate in the design. They came about as a result of previous meetings, and we were asked to contact the Ocean County Engineering Department to see if they were amenable to us modifying the plan. They have two separate driveways, one for car traffic, one for truck traffic. We went to the county, and we received a affirmative response from the county.
And you personally participated in those discussions with the county?
I did.
Thank you. And if you could comment on the revisions to the circulation, revisions to these driveways as follows: We anticipate that there'll be emergency vehicles, trash removal vehicles, there'll be dump trucks, there'll be small trucks, and there'll be the general public driving their cars and trucks on the site. Can you comfortably advise the board that this plan is as efficient and safe as the original plan that was presented?
Yes, it is. As you can see from looking at the plan to the rear of the site, there is a very generous area of pavement that will provide for adequate room for even the larger vehicles that will enter the site to pull in, turn around, get back out to West Commodore Boulevard, so, and the truck traffic and the passenger vehicle traffic has been separated to the extent possible with the use of the two driveway system. So there should be very little, if any, interaction between trucks and passenger vehicles.
Madam Chair, board members, I have nothing further of Mr. Ray. I wanted that point to be clear to the board. If the board chose this plan, we're very comfortable that it will function safely and adequately.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry, I, we can hear you. So if you could either take a private conversation outside or keep your voice down.
And I have no further on direct.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Revere?
Yes, one question. Regarding the truck traffic, would you recommend a sign be placed on the eastern entrance to direct all the truck traffic on that?
Yes, that would work, that would be acceptable to the applicant, yes.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ray? Dr. Austin?
You're talking about truck traffic, is there any other...
Heavy equipment that will be coming to the site?
Based on the applicant's testimony, I think, there are going to be dump trucks, some tandem trucks. The rear of the site has been designed by Mr. Intilly for, I believe, a WB-50, which is a 50-foot wheelbase, which is the maximum size of a truck that has anticipated to use the site.
Any other questions for Mr. Ray? Mr. Peters, questions?
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Pape, sorry, I, once again, and, Mr. Revere, you have an opportunity now to ask questions of Mr. Ray, specifically on Mr. Ray's testimony. I also wanted, if, is there anyone else here who would like to ask a member of the public who has questions for Mr. Ray?
Madam Chair, actually, I do. I'm just going to try to jump in here, because, just to speed things up, and just to get through a roundabout way, your concern, just so we can just, you have a concern, obviously, with the wetlands, preserve all of this, correct? And as far as when the report was done, whether it's still good or not. Asking you guys, what is your response to what he's trying to get about in a roundabout way, going from A to B, so we can just get to A to B?
Mr. Ray can't speak to wetlands, and I can tell you that the team that did all of the DEP permits included Mr. Intilly, but not all. The wetland approvals, all of the approvals were secured. The approvals have expired on their terms. They were perfected by the filing of easements in a timely manner. And what we've indicated to the board at the last hearing is that we will go back to the DEP, to the extent that any of the permits are deemed to be expired, we acknowledge that there's a condition of any approval, that all approvals and permits from outside agencies be in place. We accept that burden. We believe that they are in place, because they were perfected by recording the conservation easements and delivering them to the DEP, but will go to the DEP directly and confirm that as part of our resolution compliance. Did that respond to the question?
100%, so now I'm asking you, why does that not satisfy you?
Let's take one issue, yeah, let's take one issue at a time. Let's, if, Mr. Revere, you have any specific questions regarding Mr. Ray's testimony?
Okay, so, I, what do you, can you read this letter from New Jersey DEP?
That's not what, we're discussing, Mr. Revere, we are discussing the traffic engineer's testimony.
So you're representing to the zoning board that somehow these letter, these wetlands delineation...
Mr. Revere, we're discussing traffic engineer.
Just Mr. Ray?
Yeah, right now, Mr. Ray is still here, under oath. The question is...
In my own defense, it's very nerve, you know, it's very nerve-wracking coming up here, so please give me some slack. So anyway, Mr. Ray, the, how many trucks a day are you saying that are going to go into that site?
The applicant provided that testimony at a previous meeting. I don't recall exactly what the number was, but it's not going to be a significant amount of traffic.
Okay, now, I recall you said one truck a day.
I don't recall, I don't recall saying that, you'd have to provide the transcript.
Am I allowed to talk about that? I mean, he's the traffic engineer.
Yes, I was, I did not stop you. I will certainly do so if I think that you are outside the scope. So that's, that's a fine question to ask. He is the traffic engineer, you can ask him that. I believe that he answered.
Yeah, the applicant testified as to the number of trucks that would be entering and leaving during a typical day or during the week, but I don't believe I provided that testimony. If I did, I relied on the applicant.
Okay, now, who is the applicant?
I believe they're sitting in the audience.
The applicant has never testified here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Revere...
He's saying the applicant, there's, the applicant has never testified here.
But the applicant is, first of all, the applicant is an LLC, so that the applicant is Ave Partners LLC, and it also appears that a representative of the applicant did testify at an earlier hearing.
Okay, who was the representative of the applicant?
I don't recall names. I open 250 jobs a year. I don't recall, I didn't recall your name until this evening.
Okay. My point is, the applicant, Ave LLC, has never been here.
Okay, so, right, but remember, Mr. Revere, remember, this is only right this second, we're only test, having questions for Mr. Ray.
Okay. All right, now, in terms of the turning radius, did you take that in consideration, the fact with the, there's only a 32-foot road with a guardrail on the other side?
Yes.
Okay, and would that, some of these trucks have to go in the opposite lane to make a 45-degree turn?
I do not believe so, no.
Excuse me?
I do not believe so, no. But whatever revisions may be required by Ocean County would be made after the county gets a chance to review the application, assuming we get a chance to make an application to the county.
Okay, your report also said, didn't talk about the, your report covered the office building quite well. Well, they had covered it, and it did not speak to the type of vehicles at all about that are going to go into the industrial excavation yard.
It was, the report covered a combination of passenger vehicles and trucks that would enter and leave the facility during peak hours. It was a combination of both.
Yeah, but you never listed the type of trucks.
Mr. Revere, yeah.
It's more just in the dark of what's going in there.
Well, actually, I will say, I have been listening to testimony in this case for a total of about 35 minutes, and I have heard testimony about the kinds of vehicles coming in and out. So I think that question has been answered.
Can we find out how long they are?
Yes.
What's the width, what's the length of them?
I believe that Mr. Ray testified as to the length of the space that had been provided just a few minutes ago, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, yes.
Could you, I didn't, maybe I didn't hear it, could you repeat how, what's the longest truck that's going in there?
I don't know the total length of the truck, but Mr. Intilly designed the site to accommodate what we call a WB-50 articulated vehicle, which is a vehicle with a 50-foot wheelbase. Now, the total length of the truck would be longer than 50 feet, that would be just the wheelbase, so that's the design vehicle.
What's the turning radius for a vehicle like that?
It's been laid, Mr. Intilly has it on his plan. You need to take a look at his plan. The turning radius is laid out, it's on the plan.
How many feet does it take to turn?
I'm not going to give you an exact number. Mr. Intilly laid the turning radius templates out on the plan. You can see, if you look at the exhibit, there's up in the upper left-hand corner of the exhibit, there are some curves that show the turning radius of the vehicle. There's a, I believe there is a computer program called Auto Turn, that's probably what Mr. Intilly used. You plug in WB-50, and it does the work for you. So that's what he did.
Do you know if they have those trucks?
That's what it's been designed for, so that's the information that's been given to Mr. Intilly.
Well, the answer is yes or no. Do you know for sure?
No, it's not a yes or no answer. I'm trying to answer your question. If you want me to answer it, I'll answer it. If you don't, I won't.
Well, you're really, I just, these are very simple questions.
And I gave you a simple answer.
You're saying something about Auto Turn. I've never witnessed anything going in and out of there with an Auto Turn.
You're not an engineer, okay.
And I don't know if PMC or the applicants even have those trucks. And I don't know if PMC or the applicants even have those trucks.
I'm sorry, Mr. Revere, could you ask a question at this point of Mr. Ray? If you have another question about his testimony?
All right. Now, when you did your report, you, it appeared that you were using the minimum use the property could, could, for the minimum use for the property.
Not accurate.
Excuse me?
Not accurate.
What's not accurate? My statement?
That I used them, yes, your statement.
Okay, so when you say one truck a day?
I didn't say one truck a day. You cannot put words in my mouth. I testified that the applicant, or a representative of the applicant testified as to the number of trucks. And whatever information they provided to the Board, I utilized, but I do not recall saying one truck a day.
Okay, so the applicant has made a statement that they only going to be doing one truck a day? And that's what you based your traffic report on?
That was, and also, that was not Mr. Ray's statement. He did not say that he based it on one truck a day. He said that the applicant, or representative of the applicant, had testified as to the number of trucks.
Okay, I also read your report. There's no service trucks, there's no parts delivery trucks in your report.
We focus on the peak hour traffic, and we utilize the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual for the size of the office building and the maintenance building. That data is accepted by the New Jersey Department of Transportation, the Ocean County Engineering Department. It is our standard that we use to project traffic. And that's what I did.
All right, so you didn't calculate for parts supply trucks?
That's included, that's included in the trip generation analysis.
I didn't see it.
Well, it's not specifically called out, but I did. If you read the report, I clearly indicated that we use the latest edition of the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is mandated by the county, by the DOT. So that's our business, that's our standard.
Mr. Revere, I'm going to ask if you could ask your final question of Mr. Ray.
Yeah, okay. I also didn't see any mention of the employees of the construction yard.
They're included in the trip generation analysis.
I didn't see it, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Revere. As I said, you will have the opportunity to put on your own case at the conclusion of the applicant's.
All right, and I appreciate your guidance.
If I may, in June, Esme Severino testified, she was identified as a member of the applicant company. She indicated that her mother, her father, and her brother, and she were the members, and that she was and had been for quite a while the comptroller of the company. That was her opening statements. She indicated during her testimony that they anticipated two or three trucks and dump trucks that could be coming to the site on a daily basis, and that there were some smaller vehicles that may come. Her testimony then went on to say, there is a large company yard where they keep their vehicles. This is not where they'll be keeping their vehicles. And she also indicated that the workers do not come to the site, which she did testify that the maintenance building would have three employees. Again, with permission, I'll move to Allison Coffin, our professional planner. Is that acceptable?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Pape, I assume that Ms. Coffin was previously under oath?
Don't believe I was.
Then could you please raise your hand and confirm and swear that the testimony you will give us, Board, will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And could you please take your name and put your credentials before the record?
Allison Coffin, which is C-O-F-F-I-N, like the box. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. Had my license and certification for a little over 20 years now. In that time, I've been accepted as a witness in more than 100 communities throughout the state. I have appeared here as recently as last year for Coastal Classics. I'm employed by James W. Higgins Associates. We're out of Ocean Township.
Ms. Coffin, this Board will accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Ms. Coffin, I'm going to ask if you could first identify your responsibilities this evening, and second, share with the Board and the public how you prepare for these hearings. And actually, confirm that you've been here and witnessed all of the testimony that's been placed on the record.
Yes, I have.
And then if you would take us through the required proofs and share with us your conclusions and professional opinion and a narrative, and I'll try very hard not to interrupt.
So my responsibility tonight is to provide the legal proofs necessary for the Board, should you see fit to grant approval, to allow you to grant approval for this application. To prepare for tonight, I visited the site, I've reviewed the application materials, I met with the applicant and the other members of the team, I have read your Board's professional review letters, and I have been present at all of the hearings to date. I've also looked at the master plan and your development ordinance. The property that we're looking at tonight is 28.9 acres. It's a parcel that runs from West Commodore Boulevard to Route 195. The lot does currently, or did previously contain a small dwelling at the West Commodore Boulevard frontage, with the majority of the site being wooded and undeveloped. 26.2 acres of this 28.9 acre site is in a conservation easement, and the remaining 2.7 acres is where the proposed development is located. This smaller area is the basis for all the calculations for coverages, not the entire larger parcel. This site is located in an area of mixed uses, including the Jackson Premium Outlet Mall to the west, as well as other office, retail, industrial, quasi-public, and residential uses. Now, the applicant is requesting the Board's permission to develop this site along West Commodore Boulevard frontage with a 9,000-square-foot, two-story office building, a 4,000-square-foot maintenance building, and a contractor's yard with limited outdoor equipment storage. Site improvements include parking, landscaping, lighting, signage, and stormwater management. The primary occupant of the site will be PM Construction, who will have their corporate headquarters on the second floor of the office building in association with the vehicle storage yard and maintenance building to the rear. Business conducted by this entity includes site clearing, excavations, soil erosion measures, concrete work, asphalt milling and paving, utility installation, and stormwater installation. And the principal from this business, Ms. Esme Severino, previously testified as to the operations of the business, including the types of vehicles to be present on-site, number of office employees, the number of maintenance employees, the hours of operation, that that maintenance building to the rear is used for routine maintenance, such as oil and filter changes, tire changes, and all maintenance work is done inside that structure. And that the limited material storage to the rear in that contractor's yard is mostly leftovers from job sites, including things such as pipes and water mains and hydrants. And in the office building on the ground floor, there are two other non-medical office tenants that would occupy those spaces. Over the past hearings, I have watched the engineer present the site plan and amend it in response to the Board's questions and the neighbors' concerns, providing for a plan with a secondary driveway and reducing or eliminating some of the bulk variances, including previously proposed variance for parking setback, moving the sign to a conforming setback, reducing the sign area from 65 square feet to 34 square feet, reducing the sign height from 10 feet to 8 feet, removing a previously proposed diesel fuel tank, and now moving the truck driveway away from the residential neighbor. I've heard testimony from the traffic expert, who identified the truck traffic to the site as limited, perhaps several truck movements over the course of the week. And lastly, I have heard the testimony and reviewed the plans that were provided by the architect. The lot is zoned HC Highway Commercial. Permitted uses in this zone include a variety of commercial and public uses, but of particular interest to this case, it includes business materials, retail sales establishments, excluding, however, lumber yards or other similar uses, commercial office, commercial retail uses, contractors' offices, showrooms, garages, warehouses, and shops, provided, however, that all materials and equipment are stored within a completely enclosed building, and combinations of two or more of those uses in one principal building. So the proposed office use is permitted, the contractor's facility is a permitted use, the maintenance building is permitted as part of a contractor's use, but since we have some outdoor storage associated with that rear use of the site, a use variance is required. So the applicant is requesting D1 variance relief. And we also have the presence of two principal uses in two structures. There is no bulk variance relief required for lot area, width, frontage, depth, setbacks, height, building coverage, impervious coverage, or parking setback. The only two bulk variances which the applicant is still requesting are limited to the signs. The sign area permitted is 30 square feet, and at 34 square feet, we're slightly over, and a sign height of 6 feet is permitted. We were originally at 10 feet. The applicant's reduced that to 8 feet. So now, as for the proofs that you need, if you wish to grant this variance, it's my opinion that special reasons do exist for the granting of the requested variances, and the variances can be granted without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. Special reasons for the granting of the use variance exist here in that this site is particularly suited to the proposed use. This site is extremely large relative to the requirements of the zone, having just under 29 acres, with a minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet. Even when we consider just the 2.7-acre area outside the conservation easement, the usable area is nearly three times the lot minimum required. The significant size of this lot indicates that the parcel can easily accommodate two principal structures. The site is located on a county road with close proximity to a signalized intersection, and the site is located in an area of mixed uses, including the Jackson Premium Outlets to the southwest, which is a significant commercial operation, the Chamber of Commerce to the west, residences along West Commodore to the east, and other non-residential uses to the northwest, including the church, a gas station, a pharmaceutical company, and other retail uses. The proposed office building with the ancillary storage and maintenance yard is a good fit for this diverse area. The site, again, is located in the HC Commercial District, which permits some of the permitted uses, as well as uses which are similar to the non-permitted uses proposed. The zone permits a contractor's office, showroom, garage, warehouse, and shop. The proposed maintenance garage is similar to the garage permitted as part of a contractor's business, and the proposed limited outdoor storage of equipment is integral to the construction use and is similar to the permitted accessory use of bulk storage, which indicates that it is appropriately located in this zone. So in summary, large size of this lot, its proximity to intense commercial development, its location on a county road with easy access to other county roads and the interstate highway system, and its current zoning, which permits much of the proposed activity, combined to make this parcel ideally and uniquely suited to the proposed development. And this advances the purpose of the new municipal land use law by providing for an appropriate use in an appropriate location, which is Purpose G, and promoting the conservation of valuable natural resources through that conservation easement, which is Purpose J. Now, as to the bulk variances, the C variance relief, it's my opinion that these are justified. The signage area is necessary to allow for the identification of multiple tenants in the office building, and the proposed sign height helps accommodate the necessary area and allows for that 2-foot of clearance at the bottom for landscaping. So that's where we get the extra 2 feet of height that's at the bottom. There's no detriment, in my opinion, to the proposed variances. The proposed use is appropriate for the site and compatible with the surrounding area, which has a diverse mix of uses. The site can accommodate the use without any need for setback or coverage variances. The site plan provides for ample parking and safe, adequate circulation. The proposed landscaping creates an aesthetically pleasing impact to the roadway, helping to screen the storage area to the rear from public view, particularly from the neighboring lot. And the traffic impact would be consistent with other permitted uses. The last test for a variance is whether or not it would substantially impair the intended purpose of your master plan and development ordinance. It's my opinion that it would not. The nature of the use variance proposed is not really a huge deviation from your zoning, which permits offices, so the offices are permitted. It permits contractor's offices, showrooms, garages, warehouses, and shops. The proposed storage yard and maintenance garage are within the spirit of the intent of this section, except that the vehicles are not stored completely within an enclosed building. And we have a combination of permitted uses, provided that they are contained within a single principal structure as another permitted use, whereas this application includes two principal structures. Bulk storage is also permitted as an accessory use in this zone. The proposed storage yard meets all applicable standards for bulk storage at subsection 244-152 of your ordinance, which reads that no bulk storage of materials or equipment shall be permitted in any required front yard area or within 100 feet of a public street, whichever is greater. This complies. No bulk storage of materials or equipment shall be permitted between any side or rear lot line and the required side or rear yard setback. We're not in a side or rear yard. All bulk storage areas shall be screened from public view by means of suitable fencing and/or evergreen plantings, as required by the municipal agency, where the property is adjacent to a residential zone. The screening shall meet the requirements established in another section. We meet these requirements. No fence used to screen a bulk storage area shall be placed closer to any property line than the distance constituting the required front side or rear yard setbacks. We comply. All service roads, driveways, and bulk storage areas shall be paved with bituminous concrete or other servicing materials. We comply. And in no instances shall onsite bulk storage of material exceed a height of 10 feet. We comply with that. And no heavy equipment shall be operated or parked closer to the front property line than the required front yard setback plus 50 feet. And this site complies with that. So insofar as bulk storage is permitted as an accessory use, the storage of the pipes and the hydrants would meet those standards. There is no zone in the township which would permit this development without identical relief for storage not contained within a building with two principal structures and the maintenance garage. This specific combination of uses as a multi-tenanted office building with an associated contractor's corporate headquarters supported by an ancillary storage and maintenance yard is simply not anticipated in your ordinance. The use proposed, however, is substantially similar in character and scale to the other uses permitted in the zone, indicating that the HC Highway Commercial Zone is an appropriate area to accommodate this office with ancillary storage and maintenance yard. The site itself is unique in its size and location, which makes it ideally suited to the combination of uses, and granting relief under these conditions would therefore not impair your larger zone plan. So for those reasons, it's my opinion that the positive reasons exist for the granting of the requested variances. They can be granted without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, and the granting of the variances would result in an improvement of the site in a manner which is consistent with the intended purpose of your master plan and development ordinance.
I think that Ms. Coffin's statements were fairly complete. I think the depth of her research into the ordinances is clear, and I think the conclusions that she has drawn are based on the facts that she relied upon. And I choose not to have any further questions of Ms. Coffin. She is available to you at this time.
Any questions for this witness?
Yes. Will there be any toxic materials or substances on the property?
We've agreed, the only potential for that was if we had a fueling facility, and we've agreed there isn't a fueling facility, that we've removed it from the plan, and the record will reflect the type of materials that would be stored are typically pipe and some stone, that type of material. So the answer is no. There's nothing that's hazardous or toxic.
And in the maintenance shop, what type of maintenance will be done?
There was testimony by Ms. Severino again at the June meeting. She said typically, it's, the type of work would be changing of, changing of oil, changing of filters, tire repair, light bulb repair, light maintenance on the vehicles. The heavy-duty maintenance on the vehicles occurs at the construction sites. There's actually people who go to the vehicles and do the work when they break down. This is just for service.
And any fluids that are removed from the vehicles, will that be stored and gotten rid of the right way, disposed of the right way?
Right way is through a licensed hauler, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Coffin? Mr. Romar, Mr. Peters?
Ms. Coffin, if you could repeat testimony. You indicated that the maintenance building, the storage yard, the repair maintenance of vehicles was associated with the applicant?
Yes.
So the building in the back is somehow intrinsically intertwined with the building in the front?
Yes. In fact, they ensured that by making sure there were no bathrooms in the back building. It's not going to ever stand on its own.
So would the Board be out of mind in asking that as a condition of approval, would the new? the maintenance yard, the building in the back can't be separated out and put up for sale or rent to a third party, other than the person who has their main business or their office in the front? I'm trying to understand the successional growth of this business and/or this site. Because, except for you, most of us here are old enough to have watched things go 20, 30, 40 years. At some point, this business will either get too big or get sold or closed. Mr. Pape, suggestions to how, because I believe Ms. Coffin's testimony, for the use portion relies on it being connected to the principal use of the applicant.
The, what I can place on the record is that we have, from the very beginning, stated that this would be an ancillary support element of the applicant's business. And the applicant's representation is that the second floor of the building would be used for their business offices. What we can stipulate, we can't guarantee that this company lasts in perpetuity, but we can stipulate that the second floor of this building shall be offices that are the same tenant as the tenant in the 4,000-square-foot maintenance building, and that there would be no third-party tenants, that there would always be that nexus. And if that nexus was to be broken, it can only be broken by coming before this board and asking for a modification of relief.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Romar, any questions, comments?
No, sir.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Revere, do you have any questions for the planner, for Ms. Coffin? Do you have any questions?
Oh, I thought you were, okay, yes, I do.
Okay, when you did your study of the application, and your name is Allison, or what do I, what's your last name?
You can call me Mrs. Coffin.
Huh?
Mrs. Coffin.
Coffer?
Coffin, like the box that we all want to stay out of.
Oh, boy, okay.
And if you could just remember, remember to speak into the microphone, please. Thank you.
Now, when you did your study of the, of the application, did you view the aerial view of across the street?
Yes.
How many homes, residential homes, are right across the street?
None right across the street from this development.
Are you sure about that?
I don't have an aerial in front of me, and I did not do a count of them.
Okay, how many homes are to the south of it and the north of it?
I don't have a count of that.
You don't know?
No.
Now, so, how many homes are in the general vicinity?
I did not count them.
Okay, you did not count them, all right. What is the zone across the way for this?
I do not recall, and I don't believe that's on the plans that I have in front
The answer is, does not recall, and they're not part of the plans.
I didn't hear your answer.
Her answer is that she does not recall, and it is not part of the plans in front of her.
Well, it's relevant, because these people live right across the street, okay?
And that is your reason for asking it, but your question was asked and answered. As I said, you'll be able to put your thoughts before the board when you put your case on at the conclusion of the applicant's case.
We talked about toxic materials at the site. Now, did you take in consideration that all these homes that are adjoining this site are using well water?
There are no toxic materials at the site.
There's no toxic materials at an excavation repair garage?
There might be small amounts of motor oil inside.
Why do you say that? Why do you say that?
Because they're doing maintenance and oil changes.
Are you a mechanic? How do you say that? I don't understand.
With my mouth.
It's your what?
Mr. Revere, Mr. Revere, the question was answered, if you have a follow-up question.
What did she answer? Could you help me?
Yeah, she answered that there would be, could be small amounts of oil present, because there are being oil changes. That was her and her testimony.
Okay. Will they be steam cleaning the trucks there?
No.
Okay. Is that going to be stipulated? I mean, how do we know with that the minute they get approval, they just don't go gung ho and do anything they want?
That's an enforcement issue, sir. That's not a part of, that would not be part of the zoning board. That would be an enforcement issue.
Okay. In terms of the noise, have you considered how, what the decibels of a backup alarm of a major, of a big dump truck?
It would not be different than the decibels for a backup alarm on a dump truck for a permitted contractor's yard.
You just said there would not be any noise? I didn't hear what you said.
No, that is not what she said. She said that it would not be any louder than the backup alarms for vehicles in a permitted contractor's yard.
Okay. And could it, can that be heard by the neighbors?
I think that the best way to handle sound generation is to indicate that neither this board nor the governing body has the power to grant any relief from the state's standards for sound creation. There are standards that have to be met. The applicant must meet them. If the applicant is not meeting them, any activity that's violative will be stopped. That's the way the state law is written.
Okay, now, the 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM construction yard, when you take in consideration the 30-some-odd homes surrounding it, do you think that might disturb the homes around
It would not be any different than if it were a permitted contractor's yard operating at the same hours.
Okay.
So it's not relative to the use variance requested.
And how would you, would you, as a planner, would you consider this an industrial use?
No, it's a, it's a commercial use.
Then why, all right. All right, so it's, you're saying, you're classifying it as a commercial use?
Yes.
Okay. Is it permitted in this highway commercial zone?
Most aspects of this use are permitted, yes.
What aspects are not permitted?
The outdoor storage of materials.
Okay, there's a string of homes on the south of this that are very near it, very near. Now, with the backup alarms, you know, and the dump trucks making noise, and the hatch is clanging at 6:00 AM in the morning, you know, you're saying that's not going to be a problem to those people?
What I'm saying is that is no different than the permitted uses.
The permitted uses is highway commercial?
Yes.
Right. And not trucks and industrial use?
Permitted uses include contractor's offices, showrooms, garages, warehouses, and shops.
For industrial-type vehicles?
It does not specify in the ordinance what type of vehicles.
Okay, so I live right here, right there. Are you telling me I'm not going to be disturbed by 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM excavation, construction yard, and repair?
Ms. Revere, I would say, you've gone through this line of questioning, and I think that the answer from Ms. Coffin is clear, that it's not a question, she's not answering you in terms of whether people will be disturbed, but answering you repeatedly that you will not be, that their disturbance would not be any greater than it would be for uses that are permitted in the zone. Is that correct, Ms. Coffin?
That is correct.
All right, let me look through my notes, and then I'll wrap it up. I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Revere.
Okay, now, there's three office buildings, four, right? Four office sections? There's one office building with four sections?
There's one office building with one tenant upstairs and two tenants downstairs.
Okay, so there's three.
Yes.
Okay, now, if they rent one of their offices to another construction company, well, can the construction company start using that excavation yard and repair shop?
The statements that I made on behalf of the applicant in response to Mr. Peters' questioning was that we would agree, that as a condition of approval, that the office on the second floor would always be the same owner or tenant that uses the building in the rear. We indicate you can't guarantee in perpetuity that businesses won't change, but we can guarantee that the two uses would always be operated by a single entity.
Okay, so you're saying that there's hardly any toxic material in this excavation repair shop, and that there's no chance that a toxic material can be accidentally leaked on the property?
That is consistent with the prior witness's testimony.
But there is a chance, right?
Mr.?
I mean, if a truck has a problem with the fuel tank, isn't there a chance that a lot of toxic material can leak onto that property?
Mr. Revere, I think that your point has been made.
Okay, all right. Well, there is a chance. We're not, we can't say it's not going to happen.
But it could, excuse me, and I don't mean to sound a little abrupt here, it could happen in your yard with your oil. They've stated on the record multiple times that there are no toxic materials outside. They'll be doing oil changes and things inside. So we have to take that into consideration. As far as could something leak, your car could leak oil.
Oh, you just reminded me of another question. Thank you.
Mr. Revere, this will be your last question of this witness.
Now, you stated that there was a 50-foot buffer between the wetlands and the site plan.
No, I did not.
Oh, what did you state?
That was not my testimony. I did not address that.
Now, the fact that we don't know where the delineations are, does that have any impact on your, on your report?
It does not have any impact on my testimony.
So if, on the negative side, there is no environmental impact study, does that have any impact on your report?
There's an environmental impact study. It was provided to the board as part of the application.
Mr. Revere?
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute.
No.
He's making a mistake. What date is that Empire Impact Study?
Hey, I'm sorry, Mr. Revere, you're not here to question Mr. Pape.
But I should be able to correct him when he makes statements.
And you will have every opportunity to put your own version of what you believe is relevant before the board.
Okay, then.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, other than an opportunity to provide a detailed summary and a summation, which I respectfully request to hold until you have your seven-member board, the applicant is prepared to rest.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, one second. All right, excuse me, Mr. Revere? I'm, sorry, so.
I'll come off.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Pape, I appreciate your patience and your guidance. I'm just trying to get the truth out. That's all I'm trying to do.
Well.
First of all, speak into the microphone.
I'll say, I appreciate your patience and guidance, and my only objective is to get the truth out, okay?
Well, to that end, that's the question I have to ask you now. So as I said, you have the opportunity to put your case on when the applicant has rested. And I'm going to give you two choices. So Mr. Pape has just rested for the applicant. He is going to come back at a later date when there's a full board of seven people and give a summation. So you have the option of either putting your case on now, and we'll put some time aside for you to do that, or, but it is in either, it is one or the other.
Oh, I can't choose both.
No, exactly. Or you can wait until...
Obviously, I would prefer to wait, because it's very important to hear my information prior to you, the board making its decision. I would also encourage them to read Mr. Peters' planning board report, because that is basically...
We have read his report, sir.
Yeah, well, I'm encouraging you to read it.
We have read it, sir.
Okay, all right. I don't know if everybody has.
So, sir, the board, the board will certainly take all information. And so, just so we're clear, because I want you to, at the next time that this matter is heard, some time will be set aside, not an unlimited amount of time, but time will be set aside for you to present your case, which will be any comments, any documents, any testimony that you want to provide will be done at that time.
Okay. Now, I just want to clarify, next meeting...
Well, at the next meeting at this, which this matter is heard.
Of this matter.
Yeah.
Mr. Pape has rested his case.
Yes, he will be providing a summation at that time, so he will speak again.
And then I will be able to present my objector case at that time, after him.
But Mr. Revere's objector's case is to be concluded before we have any obligation to summary and summation.
That's correct. So do you understand that, Mr. Revere?
No, I didn't understand it.
Okay, so what will happen when this matter is called again is we'll begin with your case. So when the matter is called, it will be your objector's case. You will put whatever case you want to put on within reasonable amount of time, and then, when you have rested, Mr. Pape will give his summary to the board, and then the board will discuss the matter and vote, in all likelihood will vote on that night.
Okay, do I have the option of being the last person to make a presentation?
No, you do not.
Okay. And after that, you're going to have a public hearing.
So after you put your case on, and Mr. Pape does it, there is an opportunity for public comment?
Yes, okay, so after he does, after I do my case, and then he does his summation, you'll open it up to the public?
No, no.
No?
No. So we're going to open it up to the public now, and after you do your case, we'll open it up to the public. Then Mr. Pape will have the opportunity to give his summary, and then the board will act.
Okay, so if anything he says is wrong in his summary, there's no way to counter it. That doesn't seem fair.
Well, I, you have been here for, I think it's now the fourth hearing, and these hearings are all televised or recorded, so, I'm showing my age. They're all available on YouTube.
Okay.
So I invite you...
You know my point, if he says something that's incorrect, and the public knows it's incorrect, they should be able to be heard to carry the truth.
The procedure that I just laid out is the procedure that we're going to use, but I have great confidence that you will be reviewing everything that's been said between now and when you present your case, and any inaccuracies that you have heard to date, you will point out to the board at that time.
Okay, I don't want to go back and forth, but I don't, I can't anticipate what he's going to say, so I can't rebut it. So anyway, that doesn't make sense to me.
Understood.
All right, well, thank you very much. I choose to come back. I'm not going to do it now, because I don't know who's voting. And I'll choose to come back when, when we heard this. I want to say, though, there is a problem. The problem is, my objectors are worn out. I had four or five people.
And, you know, Mr. Revere, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm going to, we allowed you to speak and question the witnesses, the professionals, excuse me, who testified this evening. I am, once you're done, going to open it to anyone else here in the public to make a public comment. They have that right as well.
Okay, I'm just saying that so many meetings, and Mr. Hadak has said you can't let this go on forever.
And honestly, Mr. Revere, that's something that happens frequently.
It wears them out. It wears them out. They stop coming.
And that is a, that is a frequent occurrence with, with applications. Unfortunately, there's not a way to observe it.
Okay. Well, I've read someplace that's also a tactic. All right, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Hyman?
Is there a way that we can get some kind of consensus from the board members about this application and possibly actually vote on it tonight? Or you specifically want to wait for seven? I just think that we've heard it many, many times. I just think that we've heard it many, many times. I think for the benefit of the, um, the board and the public, it would be beneficial to actually, you know...
Mr. Hyman, in order to do that, Mr. Revere would have to have his opportunity to put on his case.
Correct, correct.
Uh, Mr. Pape is, uh, had, I'm looking, I'm losing my word, I'm sorry, forgive me. Mr. Pape had already spoken with Ms. Briani, being that we did not have a full board of seven, that we would hear the testimony, being that they have come back several times and didn't want to inconvenience anyone any further, that we would have the testimony tonight, but that we would come back to vote, that they would come back for the vote. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, I, and I understand, as I understand it, I think, uh, Mr. Hyman did understand that. He was making a suggest slash request, but it is Mr. Pape's right.
Correct. I was just asking if you would, you know, consider getting consensus and possibly actually having a vote, but I guess that understanding is that you don't want to.
If you're suggesting that there's, the board goes through a straw poll prior to, that's a...
There are no, no straw poll. No straw poll.
I, I was going to say, if that's what you, was, I, my, thank you, my strong preference is that there's a full board of seven, and, um, I know that Mr. Revere wants to have his, his time. If I could, when we concluded at the September meeting, I, I identified that some of the witnesses' testimony had concluded, Mr. Radostis, and I asked if he had, and he had been examined by the board and examined by the, the public and by the board's professionals, I asked if they could, those witnesses who qualified could be excused from the further hearing. This evening, as you opened it to the public, and Mr. Revere has examined all of our witnesses, if there's anyone else who wishes to examine our witnesses, that they do so. And then I am going to ask, Madam Chair and Counselor, that those witnesses who have so been examined and have, and I rested, that they are not required to be here during Mr. Revere's presentation or my summation. Is that an acceptable procedure?
Yes.
Thank you.
All that being said, I'm not gonna open it to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward to make any comments about what you've heard this evening, please do so at this time.
Yes, and this is on this application, and also just to what Mr. Pape had said, please, um, as you come forward, if you have any questions for the professionals that testified tonight, please let us know.
Just, sir, if you could come to the microphone and be sworn in, please.
Sir, could you please raise right, your right hand? Do you swear that the comments you'll make to this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And could you please state your name for the record?
George Lucas, by address is 990 West Commodore Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas.
Okay, um, just a fast comment. I've lived in this town for 25 years. I do live virtually right across from the proposed plan. This will reduce the value of my house, and I believe also my neighbor, Don Kaiser, who's next to me, and also there is another house across 571 from me, would be a neigh, the neighbor to this proposed, um, project. That's pretty much what I have to say. I mean, I think this is a bad idea. The traffic, as you know, I'm sure all of you travel on 571 to get up by the outlets, is terrible. It backs up to my driveway in the morning. There are dump trucks running every day on this road. I really don't think this project can handle the way this road is designed. I'm wondering if there's any proposals of road improvement here?
Can I get you up for a second? I'm not being rude, forgive me.
Okay.
As far as road improvements, that would be handled by the county, because that's a county road. So unfortunately, that's not something that we have any jurisdiction over. That would be the, under the county's jurisdiction.
Okay, I was, I mean, I was just wondering, you know? I mean, I'm just your average Joe Blow.
So, believe it or not, so are we. We're residents of town, just like you are.
I mean, I used, not that this matters, but I used to work at engineering firms as a drafter, so I can read these plans. I know exactly how it reads, 'cause I used to draw them. I was a drafter for about 40 years, so I could look at this plan and read it to the tape, seeing them every day. I just don't like it. That's just my opinion, for whatever it's worth. We have school buses traveling up and down this highway. You name it, it's on this road. I don't see how these sized trucks can drive across 571 onto traffic, in and out, just because of the traffic flow. And I do live within eyes shot. I can see this place. I see it every day. I look out at my house, I see this property. For the past 25 years, I've been living here. So with this proposed project, it's given me much more incentive now to move out. I like living here. My kids went to school here. All the schooling systems, been great. But now, I'm like totally turned off with this town. It's a shame. I don't like what's going on. And I tell you what, if this plan is approved, let me know as soon as possible, so I can put up a for-sale sign, because my house will be, the value is going down. We just had a revale in town. My house is valued now at six and a quarter roughly. Could chop that in half right now. I'm also licensed in real estate, so I know real estate. So that's pretty much in a nutshell. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming forward, sir.
Yes.
Can I, can I just ask you something?
Yes, sir.
I'm just trying to understand your comments a little bit. This property that we have here is a highway commercial zone. It is in the highway commercial zone. Is there something that you would prefer better than this specific application? Meaning, this is going to generate more foot traffic or car traffic, because it is in the highway commercial zone? So my, my understanding of you is, you're not specifically against the actual use of this application, you don't wanna see any kind of commercial being built on this? The issue that I'm trying to, you know, understand here is...
I'd prefer it not to be built on at all.
No, that I understand, but everybody owns a property, they have their property...
I know that. I know that.
They have the right to build there, so...
I know that.
You, you, you do own a property which was across the street from something, which is highway commercial, so, I don't know, you may not have known that when you actually bought it, but it was zoned that way. So it was anticipated that at some point, someone was going to develop this property. So...
Well, go ahead.
To understand your issue, is your issue specific to this application, or is it in general, the fact that it will be developed is something that you despise?
Oh, to answer your question, I don't like what's proposed, if that answers your question. I don't like this plan. Put it this way...
I'm just trying to understand the reason.
It's because it's gonna degrade the value of my property. That's the bottom line. That's what I think it's going to do.
Is it any different than any other commercial use?
I'd rather see, if you're asking me this, I'd rather see an office building. That's it. Like Crossroads Realty is right down the road from me, where I'm licensed. I'd rather see a regular office building, little strip mall, whatever it is. On two and a half acres, that's not a lot of property. I'm on an acre. So you're telling me this proposed plan, two and a half acres, is big enough for all of this? I wonder about that. Two and a half acres is not a lot of property. I've surveyed, I've been a, like, I'm not licensed, but I've done surveying work for 30 years. I surveyed my own property. I know what property surrounds and all. Two and a half acres is not a big piece of property for this. That's my adj, this is, to me, it's a bad idea. You wanna know what I'd like to see there? Just like I said, maybe an office building, whatever. Something that's not gonna generate heavy truck traffic, because let's face it, you all know what the traffic flow is like on this road. It's terrible. And it's only 30-foot, 30-foot wide road. You got, right now, we have dump trucks sailing up and down in front of my house every day. When I first moved in this town, it wasn't too bad. Now the traffic is probably triple the amount. I see it every day. I live here. I live it. I'm right across the road. And for this woman to say there's no houses around, I'm right across from it.
So, sir, I don't, I, I totally understand your concern, and I agree with you that it will cause more vehicular traffic, um, just, it is zoned for that, meaning it's zoned for highway commercial, which will actually generate more traffic. Uh, and if that's the concern, then regardless of the actual use that will be developed, there will be more traffic, so while I understand...
Well, I know that. We all know it's gonna create more traffic.
Correct, but there's nothing that this board has jurisdiction over. If it's zoned for this, then this is what they're allowed to do, right? The only reason why they're here is specifically for the use of the outdoor storage. So, but that, that, that itself is not changing the intensity of the property. Like their planner testified before, they would be able to have those vehicles if they were stored inside, um, the contractors' warehouse. So it's just that the actual, you're just saying that you don't like the commercial use, period, which I totally understand, so...
Well, that, and the fact, let's face it, um, it's not gonna do anything to upgrade the value of my house.
Unfortunately, it's not something we could take into consideration.
Well, I know that, but still, that, I mean, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else wishing to come forward at this time?
My name's, can you hear me? My name's Bonnie Revere. I live at 1009 West Commodore, right next door.
I'm sorry, could you, could you please raise your right hand?
Oh, sure.
Yes, and, do you swear that the comments you'll make to this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And thank you, and you had just stated your name.
Um, Bonnie, say, say it again, Bonnie Revere, 1009 West Commodore Boulevard, right next door to the proposed, um, project. You know, I'm not a real estate expert, but I, from what I understand, that this requires a, a D variance. And when I looked that up, it gave me like some, you know, things to think about. It, first of all, um, and I'm sorry, I'm very nervous, things are just flying out of my head, um, that it shouldn't have a negative impact on the public. And it obviously does. I mean, there's no one that I've talked to, and I've talked to several neighbors in the area, that thinks, thinks that this is gonna have a positive impact. And the fact that there's a part of this project that isn't complying with the zoning that's already there is a problem. And I don't understand why the town would wanna permit something like that when you don't have to. You know, no one wants it. There's no benefit to anybody around that, around there, except for the applicants, and it's not doing anybody any good. There's no positives at all, in my opinion, and in most of the people that I talk to. And, you know, you're supposed to, to, you know, be able to say that there's a positive and that there's no negative impact. And to me, there's, you, this project meets, meets neither one. And to go along with what my neighbor just said, um, you know, we consulted a real estate agent, we had a professional come in, and he, he looked at, um, you know, what we had, the, you know, what the project was proposed, and he wrote a letter, and he, you know, basically said the same thing. It would negatively impact...
Unfortunately, like Mr. Hyman pointed out, though, and I apologize for interrupting you, like Mr. Hyman pointed out, as a, as a zoning board, that is not something we can take into consideration. We have to follow the law, the municipal land use law.
Right, but you don't have to approve something that doesn't meet the variance.
I understand that, but I'm just letting you know, we cannot take into consideration the property value.
Well, you know, it's, you're, it, it, it's a downgrade in the neighborhood, you know, and it, it affects a lot of people. And as you said before, the traffic is bad. I can't imagine, and I was there one day when they were pulling out the, the vehicles that were already there. And the, the people that were pulling out had to, one had to get out of the truck, stop the traffic, let the vehicle pull around, he tied up the traffic even more. And if you go, if you go down that road in the morning between seven and nine, that traffic is backed up all the way to, um, well, past my house to my neighbor's house. So I don't know how, you know, it's gonna work out. It just seems like a very bad plan, and I think if you don't have to approve it, if there's something that is in the project that allows you to not approve it, that's what you should do. And that's my opinion.
Thank you. Hold, no, because he's the objector, correct? Well, Mr. Hyman has a question.
No, I just wanted to say that, you know, you're making a comment that we shouldn't even, you know, sort of consider, um, this application, because it's not, you know, it's not compliant, um, or it's not conforming to the actual zone. This is a highway commercial zone. The neighboring property, the objector, uh, and yourself are, your home is in the highway commercial zone, and you came before this board to get an approval to build a home in the highway commercial zone. So the same way that you had the right to come in front of this board to get an approval to build your home, you very well knew that the ha, that the property next door can be developed and even, you know, as a highway commercial app, development, and they have the same right as you had to come before this board and ask for a change of that use as well. So while I understand your concern, everybody has the right to come in front of this board and make those requests, and we have to take those legal considerations and determination to every application. And while I, again, I understand your concern, but this is, anybody that's here tonight that has, that lives in the vicinity, understands that you live in the vicinity of a highway commercial zone, which is bordering residential. So always, nobody wants that commercial to be developed next to them, but if it's zoned for that purpose...
I don't really, I, the, I have an office building right next to me on the other side, and it's fine. Doesn't bother me. You know, cars go in and out, it's, it's not a big problem. It looks nice, it's got great landscaping, it's a nice building. You know, there's a lot, there's a difference between that and having industrial vehicles pulling in and out of a property.
But, Mrs. Revere...
And if you, I, I don't, I, that's, that's the way I see it.
Again, this is, this is commercial.
And the difference is, when, when we built our house, no, I don't think any of the neighbors complained.
Yeah, but here's the difference, ma'am, and although we can, trust me, we're all residents of the town here. We understand what you're saying. What we're trying to explain, however, is two things. That's the whole purpose of a zoning board. There, it's zoned highway commercial, and you wanted to do something different than what was acceptable on a highway commercial... Hold on, please. You wanted to do something different, build a home in a highway commercial zone. You had the right of a, as a taxpaying citizen of Jackson, to come before this board, present your case, just like this applicant, and make, make your argument on why you should be allowed to, uh, build a home there, which you were, it was okay, you were granted the variance, and you built your own. They have the same right, whether it's approved or not, I'm just stating that they have the same right. That's number one. And number two, like, um, Mr. Hyman pointed out, we also have to be, you have to remember, that's a nice office building on one side, but it's a highway commercial zone. As Ms. Cuffin so elegantly explained, there are a, a variety of uses that could also be approved, such as a contractor's warehouse, where you'd have the exact same thing. The only thing they are here for, other than the signage, I don't, I don't wanna get this messed up, so if I do, please correct me, the only reason they are here, other than the signage, is because there will be pipes and things like that and stones stored outside, and that is the only thing that is not permitted in...
And that is the only thing that is not permitted in this zone. In the highway commercial zone, they could have that office building. They could have that inside building where they're going to do repairs. So understand, although I understand what you're saying, that beautiful office building is not the only thing allowed in a highway commercial zone.
I understand that. But, but we didn't need a variant, a D variance to put, you know, to get our zoning approved. You know, this-
But it was still a change, you still-
It was still a change.
It was still a change.
It was a change, yes. But it wasn't as big of a change. And it was, and it, and it actually, if you look at it from most people's perspective, it was an improvement.
Well, and, thank you, ma'am. And, you know, your points have been made.
I just wanted to make a comment.
Dr. Hofstein, hold on one second. Excuse me one second. I'm sorry. Forgive me both. Mr. Huthack and Ms. Revere. I have a question. Being that he's the objector, and we've already established, he will come put on his case at the next hearing, is it appropriate for him to make a public comment? I would think not.
No. Mr. Revere, you have the opportunity to put on your case. You've already identified yourself as a formal objector and have the opportunity to make your case through that, that testimony.
Well, I've been an avid YouTube viewer, and I know the objectors can also come back on the public comment. I've seen it happen.
Well, you want, Mr. Revere, I, let's keep it, can you, are you able to make a short public comment? Can I ask that of you?
Yeah, it will be. It will be. And it goes along, Mr. Hofstein and Moshe, talking about highway commercial, okay? This is not highway commercial. Take away the, the industrial use, and maybe we won't be here. If it was an office building, I'd be happy. If it was a small mall or something like that, I'd go across the border and get a bagel, I'd be happy. The point is, you have to get a use variance, a D, because of the industrial excavation.
It's not considered industrial.
Sir, that's incorrect.
That is not true.
That is incorrect.
That is not true.
As was stated many times on the record, they would be able to have these trucks coming and going on this property if it was used as a contractor's warehouse. The only reason why they're here is for the outdoor storage. Otherwise, they would not be here.
Well, I have to check into that, but I want to tell you that they're, the office they're at now is light industrial. It's located in a light industrial area.
That's irrelevant.
So that, I don't want to go into a back and forth.
That's not located here in Jackson, and that's not part of this application.
But the huge trucks is a, is a major deal killer. If, if they want to come back with a normal highway commercial, we would be okay.
Mr. Revere, you'll come back and put your case on at the next, whenever the date is established for the next hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just say one thing? And it's not, it's not, it's nothing about even this. I just want to thank Ms. Sipriani. You're so cordial and you're so nice and you're so patient and I really appreciate it. It's such a change from what we were used to. So thank you.
Wow. Well, thank you very much for making those comments. All right.
Anybody else? Mr. Huthack?
No.
I just have one comment. Mrs.-
Um, wait, hold on, Dr. Hofstein. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to come forward and make any comments at this time? Seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close public session. Dr. Hofstein?
Yes, Mrs. Revere, you, er, when you received your resolution to build your house, which is Resolution 2014-28, that was a little over ten years ago, you did come before this board to ask for a use variance, which you received. I remember quite well, I was on the board then. Your son represented your application at that time. But you did receive a use variance, and you requested that to be able to build your home with permission from Department of DEP. And that, that's why you were here. But you did receive a D variance.
Mr. Huthack?
I was just going to, sir-
Mr. Revere.
Please. I, I was just going to say that, you know, you, you came before this board ten years ago, you got your approval for your home. And what is Riviera Advocacy Group LLC? That seems to be registered to your home address.
Well, yeah, I have an LLC. It's, I'm a consultant, and it's based in Monroe.
Well, if you go onto Google Maps and you put in your address, it comes up that Riviera Advocacy Group LLC is your home. And it refers to a law firm. Perhaps that's your son's? I don't know.
No, we don't operate any business out of Monroe, okay?
You'll have to talk to Google then.
I'm trying to tell you, it's the truth. We don't operate any business.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know if it's okay if he uses the mailing address. I have no clue. But there's no legal, there's no nothing.
Okay.
And I, I can assure you of that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. P. Future date?
This is who have testified, Steve Radasi, the architect, Michael Intilly, the engineer, John Ray and Scott Kennel, both as the traffic engineers, Allison Coffin. Who am I missing? I'm not missing anybody. The, all of those witnesses have concluded their testimony. We have rested examination of all the witnesses by the public and the board, and the board's professionals has concluded. Going to ask specifically, may I come to the meeting, the next meeting, without those persons, just so the record's clear?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Thank you. Then I look to you and to establish when we return.
Okay. So let's figure out what that date is. Anyone over in that section of the room able to give us what the next date would be?
It's going to probably be May. Well, no, 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 the next meeting with availability. I'm thinking the second meeting in May, potentially. I'm sorry, we carry JCP&L too?
May 7th.
Madam Chair, I'm out of the country from the 13th to the 31st of May.
I guess we're looking at June.
June 4th.
June 4th. Then June 4th, may I ask that the record reflect that it's carried without the requirement of renotice or republication?
Yes. So this matter will be carried till June 4th. There will be no additional notice. Ms. Revere, I'm looking specifically at you, so on June 4th, you would have the opportunity to present your case. Understood?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all, and good night. See you in June.
Thank you. We are going to take a quick 10-minute break. We'll return at 5:00 after 9:00.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna call this meeting back to order. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Dante Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. We are here with regards to 747 Tom's River Road. It's a bifurcated application. We're here for the Board's approval with relation to the use variance. If the Board acts favorably tonight, we will be back for the Board for the site plan and application. I do have one individual to provide testimony. He's gonna wear two hats tonight, Mr. Murphy. So, without further ado, I'm gonna have him come up and be sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you swear that the testimony that you're going to give this Board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you please state your name again for the record and put your credentials on the record?
Sure. Brian Murphy, M U R, P H Y, eighteen fifty-six Route Nine in Tom's River. I'm a Principal of F W H Associates, Licensed Professional Planner and Engineer in the State of New Jersey. Been before this Board and roughly a hundred other Boards throughout the state.
This Board will accept your credentials, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The application, as indicated, is for seven forty-seven Tom's River Road. It's consisting of two point four acres in the P V zone. Could you put up the aerial? North is basically up on this app- on this plan. You'll notice the site is almost entirely cleared. This is a Google Earth aerial shot of the property. And historically, there was some storage out here. My earliest memories, there's been food trucks out here almost my entire life. There's houses to the west, to the north, and there's one to the east in this northeast corner. All these houses have access out to Lake Hurst Road, not to Tom's River Road or five seventy-one. You'll notice there's a substantial wooded area here. This is a stream corridor that runs through this area, crosses under five seventy-one, and goes into the area to the south. All this area is basically preserved as six hundred foot buffers off the section in Tom's River that runs east to west, parallel to five seventy-one in this area. The stream is actually off the site, off the, this picture, but it's on the other side of the road. With the stream that runs through here, there's a two hundred and forty foot buffer off here. We are in the Pinelands area, and that buffer basically consumes roughly sixty percent of the site. Unfortunately, it cuts across the bulk of the front of the site, so we only have the small area on that southwest corner for access into the site. Even though you can see, historically, there's a trail that kind of loops around. We legally can't improve that access that's on the east side of the property. So, we'd have to basically improve that west side and only have access all over there. Could you bring up the site plan, please? Yeah, it should be in the same file. There we go. What we're proposing is a very modest seven hundred and forty square foot building. It's gonna have an office, a garage for storage of material, and a bathroom. That's basically located on that west side. As indicated, the access would come off that southwest corner outside of the buffer. I apologize, I should have highlighted the buffer better. It's hard to see on this plan, but I'll follow it with my pen. Basically runs along this dash line, so you can see it takes up a substantial amount of the property. In the rear area of the property, we're gonna have a storage yard, gravel storage yard for material. And I'll get into what that material is gonna be. The company is basically a dumpster supply company, so the dumpsters will be provided in that rear area. We'll have a substantially landscaped. There should be another site plan. This was the original plan. It might be in a separate file from this. No. That's okay. Yeah, go back to the other site plan. Anyway, so there's a stone area, basically, we're gonna landscape around that yard. That yard is gonna be for the containers. We have one offloading roll-off truck and twelve containers and one dump truck, basically for removal of debris. Nothing comes back to the yard with any material in it. They only come back empty. It's illegal for them to bring it back full of material. So, basically, the dumpsters go out to the site, they stay out to the site, and then when it's time, when they're done using it, they go out, they pick up the dumpster, bring it to the recycling yard or the county dump and dump it at that location, and then it comes back, either back here or to another site.
Excuse me, Mr. Murphy, I'm just sorry. Were you saying that this is not the correct site plan?
Yeah, there was another plan that was submitted. This was the earlier plan before we indicated where the yard location was. But you should have a copy of the plans that you have, the paper ones. Yeah, I believe they show the yard up on the northeast corner of the parking lot. Yeah, that's the only real difference between these two plans, is that there's a stone yard in the northeast corner.
So, the correct one is the one dated five twenty twenty-four?
No, it's twelve nineteen twenty-four.
Well, I still imagine the revision date.
Yes.
On the plan that's dated five twenty-four.
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
Revision date's on the top of the title block.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that what the Board was reviewing is the correct site plan. Thank you.
So, we would fence and landscape that stone yard. Basically provide privacy and security for the yard. Not that we're worried about someone stealing our dumpsters, but I think for safety's sake, it's good to have the fencing around it as well. With the addition of the evergreen trees basically around it. And again, as Mr. Alfieri indicated, provided we got a positive vote tonight, we would be back for a site plan. At that point, we'd obviously, we'd have a full landscape plan and drainage plan provided to the Board. The hours of operation are daily from seven to four. Currently, there's one employee. Typically, all work is done over the phone or internet. As indicated, we have one roll-off truck, a dump truck, and twelve containers. Sewer water is by septic and well. Stormwater, we will comply. With regard to parking, we're basically looking at this as an office use, which would require one stall. We're providing four at the location as one of them has to be handicapped. And signage will comply, lighting will comply as well, as well as trash. With regard to the buffers, to the, there's buffers basically on the northeast and west side and along the frontage. We will comply with those buffers. The existing vegetation is gonna remain as what's out there currently, which is the dark green that's on this plan. But again, we're gonna supplement that around the gravel yard to provide evergreens so that it even more enhances the effect of hiding the usage of the site. Access, again, is off that southwest corner. The storage would only be the containers by the applicant. And again, we're only looking at a seven hundred and twenty square foot building, relatively minor in nature. There's a couple of waivers. Obviously, the only outside agency, there are none, it would only be you for this application. When we come back for site plan, there'll be a number of outside agencies. Traffic report, we would ask for a waiver because due to the very de minimis nature of the application. Current survey, the survey is from twenty twenty-one, there's been no development out on the site since then. Paved storage area, I think I'd probably leave that for the site plan. And the other waiver is the access drive. There's a requirement for a ten foot landscape strip, basically on the sides of the property. We wouldn't be able to provide that along, right along this very southwest portion only because we're literally right up against the buffer line for the conservation easement. So, we don't have a choice. In order to have access into the site, we'd have to impinge on that area just for that section. Again, this is a use variance to permit a contractor's office and outdoor storage in the P V zone. We're looking at special reasons variance under the P V zone requirements. The permitted uses are farm, a single-family home, school, and a church. The restrictions on this lot really don't lend themselves to those uses since over sixty percent of the lot is consumed by the conservation buffer and the limited access only out to Route five seventy-one. There's not enough room for a church or a school, for that matter. The farmland, there's not enough area to really farm because it's too small of an area. A single-family house, as indicated, the houses around us all go out to Lake Hurst Road simply because it's a less traveled road. And I think to try to build a house on this lot that's sellable on such a narrow frontage and, you know, you're set back off the road, but you really have no privacy either. And you would be coming out onto the five seventy-one, which obviously is a relatively busy road. We're proposing, the proposed use provides an efficient use of the land. Seventy-nine percent of the lot will remain open. The building coverage will only be zero point six percent. The previous coverage would be twelve point five percent. Again, these are very nominal numbers for the size of the property. The scale of the building is really de minimis, given the size of the building of only seven hundred square feet. When we look at the special variant, special reasons variance, we look at the Medici test and Saddle Brook for supportive adjustment. Judge Gilman noted there's really three categories for special reasons. One is inherently beneficial use, which we are not. The other one is undue hardship would be entailed by trying to build what's permitted on the site. I already went through really the challenges of trying to build what would be permitted on the site. And the last one is the site is particularly suited. This site is particularly suited. The site's along a county road with easy access to the surrounding area, which you want for commercial use. It's sufficient size for this particular type of use because we don't need a very large area. There are many commercial businesses along this corridor. You have a, I'll always call it the Minuteman, but basically it's a convenience store up the road. We have a metal shop, we have a mechanic shop all along this corridor. And obviously, there's, the south side is basically blank, other than there's the school on the south side as you go further down the road. But the rest of it basically is all conservation area that can't be built. And we have intermittent houses spread throughout this area as well. Under the positive criteria, we're looking at the purpose of the M L U well, providing adequate light air and open space. As I indicated, we're seventy-nine percent open on the site. Provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for commercial uses that this would definitely fit on this property.
Mr. Murphy, could you be a little less casual with your microphone? I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sure, I apologize. To promote a desirable visual environment, again, the diminutive nature of the building is in a major impact on the property. It's improving the property and also providing the additional landscaping around the yard area, so you wouldn't even see it. All the, the six-foot fence, all the containers are less than six feet high, so you wouldn't even see the containers once they're in the yard. And obviously, to encourage the efficient use of the land, which this does. Under the negative criteria, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. We look at really what the detriment would be, and it's noise, it's pollution, and traffic. All these are de minimis. You know, again, we're looking at one employee, truck coming in and out, delivering the trailers. It's very low traffic usage for the site. As far as air pollution or the noise associated with the use, again, he comes in the morning, pulls it out, drops it off. You have some that come back in the evening, but it's not a daily thing where every container is coming back and forth. Some are out for a week, some are out for a month, they vary in time. This site is designed to be efficient and obviously are well within the hours of typical normal usage. It's my professional opinion that the benefits will outweigh any detriment associated with the application. The variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. The use is supposed to be low intensity in nature, both traffic and activity during the day hours. The site is two point four acres, where one acre is required, so it's a large piece of property. But again, well over half of it is consumed by that buffer. Under the project consistent with the master plan, the exist- Under the project consistent with the master plan, the executive summary dated 2009 of the master plan 3.0 has goals and objectives, and I quote, "The master plan contains the goals and objective statement. The key goal is to work towards a balanced community. While the housing stock is more balanced in meeting needs, commercial and industrial developments need to be expanded to meet the local demands." Also, under the goals and objectives statements, community vision, the community will, with industrial and commercial development areas suited for diversity of economic and employment opportunities, under the land use growth element, to direct growth in areas suited for land development, to encourage the use of planning techniques that will provide a desirable environment, and to bring properties into a ratable tax base for the township, which this will do as well. It's my professional opinion that the project will not substantially impair the goals and objectives of the zone plan or master plan, but will in fact support those goals. I reviewed Remington Vernix's letter dated March 5, 2025. I agree with all the contents of the letter. I believe I covered most of the comments. Also, in my testimony, there was a couple of comments that they asked that I put on the record on page five, item B5. The stone yard would be adequate for the roll-off containers. If we did pavement, they'd only get torn up by the containers and gouged, so really the stone is kind of the best for that. And it would only be for the yard. So that the rest of the parking area would be paved, it would only be basically where the roll-off containers would be dropped and stored. Page five, item B6, no storage material will be greater than 10 feet high. As I indicated, all the dumpsters will actually be shorter than the six-foot fence that'll surround it. Page five, item B7, equipment shall not be parked closer to the front property line than the front setback plus 50 feet. So that comes to a total of 110 feet. We comply with that. The yard is actually 135 feet off the roadway. Page six, item G, there was a question regarding that the center hallway was indicated as a waiting room. It's not a waiting room, it's just a center hallway to basically be an air break, wind break, to go into the office and the bathroom. We don't have anyone come to the site, no clients come to the site. It's purely phone and internet usage. Page six, item J, there's room for emergency vehicles, that pavement area that's indicated is 42 by 80, which should be large enough for any vehicle to be able to move around in that area. Page six, item L, buffers for lot five and 45. Lot five is the lot that's to our north, and lot 45 is the lot that's to our east. Both, as I indicated, we're going to keep the buffers that are there, we're going to enhance the buffers around the, what we're going to propose to develop. And none of those houses are closer than 130 feet to the property line. Not to what we're building, but actually to the property line. So they're substantially set back from what we're proposing on the site. I believe I covered that, all the comments within Mr. Peters' letter. Obviously, if there's anything I missed, I'm sure Mr. Peter will let me know that. And that's it.
Any questions from Mr. Murphy?
I have a couple.
Sure.
Are there going to be any vehicle maintenance on the site?
No.
Okay. And the, what are they full in these containers?
It's whatever they drop off at the, at the job sites. So it might be construction debris, you know, if you're pulling up roots, they throw the roots in, if you're basically stripping sheet rock off an interior of a house and rebuilding it, you use that. Out on a construction site, you know, of a new house, obviously usually have a dumpster, things like that.
And what are these containers going to be stored on?
On stone.
On stone?
Yes.
Is that, is that the right way to do it with this stream that goes through this property to leach down into?
So the containers come back clean. They're not allowed to bring anything back with material in it.
I understand that, but they're filled with dust or asbestos or anything. It rains, the water runs out, and it's running onto?
Anything with asbestos or anything like that has to be bagged, so it's not allowed to be just thrown into the dumpster. Same, you know, so any, any material like that has to be bagged and contained in there. So the way it's disturbed.
So in your professional opinion?
Sure.
There is no risk of any contamination entering the ground from any of these containers?
I don't believe so, only because, but most would, typically it's construction material for most part. So there's usually not a lot of hazardous material other than asbestos, which has to be taken care of completely separately from this method, because it has to be bagged and disposed appropriately by a license.
And lastly, the lines with the delineation between, you know, this corridor, this stream corridor?
Sure.
Obviously, you can't put anything on that.
No.
So is there going to be some type of marking that would prevent in the few years down the road from anybody putting containers or vehicles or anything?
Sure, I get what you're saying. You know, we could do something where we basically put either like PVC pole or something every 50 feet or something along, along that, so at least it's delineated so someone can't say, I didn't know it was there. You know, we've all seen things grow and go in places they shouldn't be, so yeah, that's fine.
So you're confident that there would be no leakage of anything bad going into the ground?
No, because they're, again, they're coming back empty. So anything that, that's really could be in there is maybe some dust material or something like that, it's not going to be, they dump them completely, so when they come back. And also, that's part of the purpose of that buffer to the stream, is the buffer is meant to actually act as a filter to the stream.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, Mr. Murphy? Trying to understand the, is this business currently operating?
Yes.
Okay. How many containers do they use on a average basis, monthly, weekly?
They have 12 containers, and the duration varies. Some people need it for two days, some people keep it for a month. So it, it all varies. There's no set time on how some, how long someone's going to rent it for.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand because you're asking, you know, this is for 12 containers, that means what happens when the, I mean, hopefully, business grows?
Mm-hmm.
What's the plan then? You're coming now, you're going to have one small office, and you want to be able to put, you're saying 12 containers there. Is there capacity for more?
Yeah.
What happens, for whatever reason, you outgrow this and you move? What happens to this property then?
Sure, so there's room for 20, I think about 22 containers, depending on the size of the containers. So there's room to grow. It's a one-man show, so right now, anyway, so it's owner-operated, so it's not a large conglomerate that we're talking about here. So it's, he's just, you know, one man doing, doing his business.
So he's manning the phone and driving the?
For the most part, it's, it's over, you leave a message or you send the internet, and it's typically cellphone. It's not like he's sitting in an office.
What's the name of the business?
That's a good question.
Brother Recycling.
Yeah, Brother Recycling.
Now, is there going to be evening parking?
Uh, no, it's not, no, it's not required because it's under 25 stalls.
You mentioned a couple of times the height of the dumpsters. I don't know, when I look at a construction site, you see a dumpster out there, it looks pretty, pretty tall.
Nah.
They're typical 30 yards, you're talking about, right?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, they're all under six foot.
Concrete ones, I know are like lower, but.
Yeah, yeah, there's some, there's some that are roughly four, four feet, there's others, they would max out usually around five, because you need to be able to put something into it so that they don't not, they're not going to make them too tall.
And no materials, no, nothing comes back to the site?
No, it's illegal for them to do that.
Mr. Brimming? Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy, you seem to be providing testimony about operations.
Sure.
What are the hours?
Seven to four daily.
Okay, so the last return would be at four o'clock?
Correct.
And is that seven days a week, five days a week?
Five days a week.
I'm sorry?
Five.
Mr. Martins?
Yes. First, I'd like to get some clarification. For this application, so can I consider future use? I think it was a similar question. We know we have one employee now, but you sell it, does this?
Certainly, the request is for a variance from the board, which would run with the land unless there were other conditions put upon it.
Okay, so it runs with the land, okay. So you can have growth, or you can sell it, and now you have 20, 20 people answering the phone there. I'm exaggerating, but potentially that could happen, right? Because you have the space to be able to put 40 containers, 50?
No, we have space, we have space for about 25 containers total.
That's max, no matter.
And we only have four parking stalls, one of them's handicapped, so.
Okay. So if for any chance, future, they wanted to do more than 25, put more parking spaces, they'd have to come here and get that approval.
Have to come here or find a different site at that point, yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you. One more question whether I can consider. So you mentioned about the benefit to the public, increased property tax, all that kind. Can I consider that as a benefit to the public, the fact that?
No, the benefit I wasn't saying was, was taxes. That was one of the purposes within your master plan. That was within the element of the master plan.
Okay. So the only thing that's going to sit there is the container itself, right? Not the truck that brought it in?
No.
How do I think about that? Okay, so that, that brings it in, drops it off, the truck leaves.
Yeah, basically, he's going back and forth, picking up the containers, moving them, bringing them where they need to be.
Okay, and then they come in empty. So oil leaking from the trucks, that's not a problem back?
No.
Okay. Let me just, okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Houdak?
The trucks that's picking up the dumpsters, are they parked there overnight? Or do they just pick up the dumpster and then drop it off and then leave?
Yeah, basically, they, they get the dumpster, let's say, starting off, they get the dumpster from the yard, they bring it to the job site, drop it at the job site, however long it's going to be rented for, whether it's a day, a month, then they come back to retrieve it, they'll bring it then to the dump, drop the material that's in that, then bring back the clean dumpster, or a lot of times that dumpster winds up going directly out to another site.
Right, so the truck that's hauling the dumpster does not belong to the company?
No, no, they, they.
And then they're parked there?
Yeah, the owner, the owner is driving that truck.
Okay, and they park it at night there?
Yes, yeah, in the parking lot, not on the stone.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Could we have stipulated in the resolution that the maximum number of dumpsters would be 25, and that they must be stored on the same type of stone or whatever they're using if they, if they increase the amount?
Sure, absolutely.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy doesn't want me to ask him questions, so he killed my microphone. Thank you for your testimony. You've been past the site in the last few months? This site's located in the Pine Lands, correct?
That is correct.
So an application for development would need to be submitted to Pine Lands, correct?
That's correct.
Has one been submitted as it relates to the request for the use variance?
No.
Okay. Explain to the board and myself that whether or not Pine Lands has anything to do with the use of the property.
Yes.
So they could, even if this board said yes, you can do this use, Pine Lands could say no.
They could, sure.
So the board understands that we're not the only approving authority, not just for the site plan, which would be subsequent to this, but for the use itself.
So can I interject and ask, it's probably not like a dumb question, but I'm sure some of you are thinking the same thing, then why wouldn't you have applied for that already?
It's, I feel this is the bigger hurdle, so if the board.
Bigger than Pine Lands?
In the, for this portion of it.
I think what he's trying to say nicely without saying it to us is why go through all that until you have this basic approval?
Exactly, so.
My next commoner question would be, will you come back to the, assuming you're successful with the use variance, will you be coming back to the board for site plan before you get a response from Pine Lands?
I cannot come back to the board until I get a response from Pine Lands. So provided I get, I get the use variance, I would have to go to Pine Lands, get their approval of the, of the site plan, at least an inconsistent letter of consistency, before I could return to any other, the other agencies, you, the county, anybody.
So how many of yours is that?
Yeah. Right now, I'd say we're probably back to you in eight months, nine months, hopefully.
So faster than the county road department is what you're telling us?
Yes, yes, at times.
So, Mr. Murphy, the site currently is cleared?
Yes, mostly.
Pardon?
Mostly, yes.
Correct. And some of it's grass, some of it's stone? And your testimony is that your client's going to put the dumpsters and the vehicle that picks up the dumpsters in the area outside of the required buffer?
Yes.
And your suggestion as to how that buffer would be delineated? Because it's open, it's clear?
Sure.
And no disrespect to your client or to the applicant's team, but there's a vehicle that picks them up out there right now, and it's sitting in the middle of the buffer, and there's a dumpster at the south end of the berm that's sitting in the middle of the buffer. So, in the immortal words of Mr. Houdak, you're going to need to prove to us that you're going to follow what you say you're going to do. Because quite frankly, you came here tonight and said, well, there's wetlands off-site, there's a buffer, and we're not allowed to do anything in the buffer, except you're already running the business in the buffer.
Correct.
Fair enough?
Yeah. That's why I pointed out from the get-go that that road goes around the entire site right now, and it has for years, quite frankly.
My concern simply is, is that this board has a responsibility to the rest of Jackson Township, including the zoning officer and the code enforcement officer, to write a resolution that's easy to walk over to the person in the building and say, you're on the wrong side of the line.
Yep.
And there's nothing out there that stops them from doing it right now because the buffer's not delineated out in the field, to the best of my knowledge.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so we would agree, I mean, we'll show it at site plan, but we would agree basically every 50 feet we'll put a PVC pole along that buffer line.
Well, I think when we come back, that's a, that's a great offer. We may ask you to do something different, like outside of the first 50 or 100 feet from the street, to put a fence up. Something more permanent so that there's, because all we're doing is setting ourselves up for an enforcement problem. And so unless you guys can convince us, the board differently, our recommendation's going to be there needs to be something more permanent along that line, lest a thousand excuses come up as to why I got to stick one over on the other side. This board takes their responsibility seriously about creating something that can be followed out in the field by both the applicant and the municipal officials.
And a split rail fence would suffice, correct?
Certainly could.
Instead of just poles?
We talked about buffers, and while we're not doing site plan, would you agree that at this point, given the limited amount of? would you agree that at this point, given the limited amount of information you've given us, we can't make a determination as to whether or not the existing buffers for lots, I think it was five and forty-five, are sufficient or not?
Correct.
It's going to be, be something that we do at site plan. The applicant is not requesting, nor is the board going to approve any relief from the buffer requirements this evening.
No.
You may have to come back and put up a fifty-foot perimeter buffer, put up a berm, put up a fence, put up more trees, whatever happens at site plan. You're not asking for relief from the buffer standards this evening.
No.
Thank you. As it relates to the containers themselves, I apologize either to the applicant or to you guys if, if I sound nitpicky. But some of the board members will remember these. Can the containers be stacked? Can they physically be stacked?
I'd have to ask the applicant.
Okay, would you agree to a condition that they cannot be stacked?
Yes.
Okay. Some board members may remember, we, we heard an application, someone was trying to turn shipping containers into livable spaces. And they were on a site, and then we went out to the job site, all of us, the week before the meeting, and they had them stacked three high. You didn't have to go on the site, could see them almost from the street. So I apologize, it sounds a little either nerdy or nitpicky. We're not going to stack them.
We've all seen crazy things.
Okay. You indicated, you've used the phrase a couple of times, that dumpsters come back clean. And while I respect your engineering acumen, I have no idea what clean means. And I have a concern because when they're used for junk or for houses, it doesn't mean you can't get, someone throws a thing of antifreeze, someone throws a paint can in there. So perhaps the other way, you say they come back clean, is, who's standard of clean? D E P, Ocean County Hazardous Waste, Jackson Township's ordinance? I don't know what clean is, but can we say that the, in addition to clean, that there will be no cleaning of the containers on this site?
That I can say, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question about that very topic? One of my questions was going to be, are they disinfect, I'm piggybacking, thank you. I was piggybacking on Mr. Hudak, are they power washed, are they disinfected? How are they cleaned?
I believe they're just dumped, but I'll, I'll get clarity, clarity, clarity in a moment on that.
The, the reason we, unless all, I think if we, we said how many people have had a dumpster in front of their house?
Yeah.
And so, you know, you put the drywall in there and it rains, and then you got a, the thing's full of water. So our, our concern is that if they're full of water in someone's driveway or at the transfer station, that's okay. But you're going to put them on stone, which means when you put them on stone, whatever's in there goes right into the groundwater. So I don't think that's an improper health or safety concern for the board to be considerate of.
Sure.
I'm not sure if I heard you say this or not, there will be no repairs of the dumpsters on site?
No maintenance of the trucks.
No maintenance of the truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure what would be repaired on the dumpster, other than maybe this, a spring or something.
Well, no, unfortunately, I know too much about dumpsters, so in order to maintain or fix a dumpster, you need an arc welder. So I, you need an arc welder, you need a settling tanks. Settling tanks got to be stored somewhere. So whether you or the applicant comes up and says what they're going to do, I think it's important to note what will or won't be done out there.
Sure.
So I don't know if we have enough testimony with regards to what's going to be done with these containers on site. Madam Chair Members of the Board, as it relates to the, to Mr. Murphy's testimony, the fact that there's a buffer is not this positive of, well, what's left, we can fit stuff on. It's in the PV zone. PV zone has specific uses in it. I think those uses need to be reconciled, so whether we have direct testimony from Mr. Murphy or the idea that they're going to, before they come back for site plan, get an approval from Pine Lands. And if they don't get an approval from Pine Lands, they won't come back at all. But I think there has to be some recognition that the site is zoned, Pine Lands Village. There are limited uses, there are low-intensity uses. There are uses that, quite frankly, aren't practical anymore. I think you can do resource extraction in the Pine Lands Village zone, which may not be applicable to this. But I think we need to sort of reconcile, we said, well, there's, there's a couple of single-family houses, and there's a fifty-five mile an hour county road out front. I'm not sure if we've reconciled the zone, so to speak. But for now, I think I've offered enough comments for the board.
When Mr. Murphy returns over here, is there anyone from the public that would like to ask Mr. Murphy a question? He'll be back in a second.
He's just getting some answers.
Mr. Murphy, there are some members of the public would have questions for you, but I don't know if you wanted to supplement your testimony before that happens.
Yeah, I'll probably supplement it first. So the, regarding the cleaning, basically, the way that, as I thought, the dumpsters are basically just dumped at the trash recycling yard and broom swept, and that's the limit of cleaning. And as far as maintenance-wise, you know, on the dumpsters, his dumpsters are new, he doesn't own any welding material, he's not planning on welding them. If he has an issue, he'll bring them to a shop and get them welded.
So how do we reckon? How do we reconcile the, what Mr., the point that Mr. Hudak brought up, or Mr. Peters himself as well? Antifreeze, any type of liquid, any type of chemical is dumped in there. How is, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Sure.
I get it. If we're dumping, it's going to be dumped, it's going to be swept, but how is that making sure that something's not seeping through?
Well, it's, it's a metal container, so basically, they, they dump it out. Is everything possible going to be gone out of there? I can't say that. You know, obviously, there may be some residue in, in the container when it's all done. I think it's impossible to get it completely clean in, in that way. It's not, just not the nature of containers in that way. But we will not be cleaning them on site, that's for sure.
Before we have the members of the public come up, any other questions for Mr. Murphy? We're going to open this to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so at this time.
You've been paying attention. Could you swear that the testimony you will give to this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And will you give your name and address for the record, please?
Gilbert Harris, 782 Lake Hurst Avenue.
Thank you, and I know you were here before, so this portion is just to ask Mr. Murphy, any questions based on his testimony? There will be a period for general comment before we close tonight.
Okay. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
The right-hand side of that property is my property. That light line that's drawn there is supposed to be an easement. See the little light line? Dark light.
Do you have a pointy thing?
That would be the line going here. You see it on the board?
What is the easement for?
It, it's actually off to the right side. It's hard to see on this plan, but it does show up on our survey. It's right in this area. And if it goes down, there's an inlet in the, right, right here, yes. Well, that's, that's what the buffer is measured, measured off of, that, that stream corridor that's on your property. Yeah, it, it's part of a stream corridor. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Sir, I'm sorry, could you go back to the microphone?
Why is your client dumping waste along that line?
I don't know that my client is dumping waste along that line.
Come by and take a look.
Again, I, there may be waste there, I don't know if it's him or people driving by, but I don't know.
There was no waste there. That whole line has a dirt line stacked this high, right down that line. And he also started putting containers along that line that you said were going to be on the other side.
Well, that, that's kind of Mr. Peters' point, is that we want to delineate and clean up the site so that we know exactly where he's allowed to go.
Cleaning up that site has nothing to do with my grandchildren, my neighbor's new child baby and whatnot. With whatever hazardous waste that might come out of those containers. It's a residential area.
Sure.
You want to put a church up there, put the church up there, like they say. You want to do a farm, do the farm.
Excuse me, sir, remember I said this is the time to ask Mr. Murphy questions? You'll be able to make your general comments in a bit.
Mr. Murphy, you should come and take a look at the property. I've spent a lot of time, a lot of money, my wife and I, improving that property. Come take a look at it. That's what I, that's the question I have to ask you. And we go from that point on.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Hours start at six in the morning, not seven. The clinging is there from the containers.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hudak? Someone from the zoning department, can, have you gone out and looked at this property? Can that, can an inspection take place to see if this is actually true? I think that'd be a good idea.
Now, just to that, would there, out of that inspection, would there be some kind of report that we get to see? What findings you have? I just wanted to make sure that I can review something.
That's what I.
Yeah, yeah, just.
And if a report is going to be generated?
Yeah, looks okay, you know, official, something, yeah, thanks.
And that report would obviously be provided to the applicant as well. Excuse me, I, I think you had a question? Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you'll give to this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name and address for the record.
Thomas Maxfield, 784 Lake Hurst Ave. So just looking at the meeting minutes, this is a application for a septic disposal field. Will any septic be disposed on this lot? Excepted waste?
Yes, there's a septic disposal field, there would, would be for the office use.
So just like flushing the toilets and?
That's the only, that's the only thing that would be going into that septic.
Now, you mentioned the, having a capacity of about twenty-two units, you said?
Yes.
Now, if those units are stackable, will that double the capacity? Or is twenty-two?
No, we've indicated we, we will not stack them.
Okay.
That would be part of, in the resolution.
As the resolution, okay. And I do live two houses down from this, and I do see the waste that is there now. And it has not gone away at all. It is a continuing issue. So I think some kind of inspection does need to be done.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if the rest of the board could hear that, I couldn't hear your last comment.
There is some kind of waste that is dumped at the lot now, so some kind of inspection should be done on this?
Yes, and as you heard, they were, the board had already requested the zoning go out to make that inspection.
Okay.
We've had issues with dumping out on the site also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to come forward and ask questions to Mr. Murphy? Seeing no one else.
Oh, wait, oh, there's a, there's a baby coming up to.
You have to switch.
Do you swear that the testimony you'll give to this board is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name and address.
It's Tony Maxfield, 784 Lake Hurst Ave. We are new homeowners, we just purchased 2023. We live on a beautiful two-acre lot. It's just a house over twenty-five hundred square feet. We bought it because of the land and to build a family, as you can see. I hate doing this, and I hate having my daughter out at ten o'clock at night, but it means a lot for me to be here and voice my opinion. I'm just concerned with the.
I'm sorry, I just, just, I have to be consistent. This is right now, this exact second is just if you have questions for Mr. Murphy. You'll be able to come up?
Yep, I'm getting to it.
Okay.
So sorry. I'm nervous, and this is not my thing, so. Put me back home, my chickens and my bread. I just have a question about the shipping containers. You said as of right now, there's no really cleaning process. For the materials that are going to be left over, is there some sort of cleaning process that you can establish?
They, basically, when they.
Like, has it ever been looked into to do something like?
No, when they go, when they go to the dump, basically, they, they dump the material and it's, and it's brush cleaned.
Okay.
That's the extent of, of, of the cleaning of the, of the containers. And we're, we've said on the record, we're not going to hose them down or clean them at the site.
Okay.
Because I think that wouldn't be a good idea.
Okay. And that's all I'm allowed to ask right, nothing else right now?
Yes, but it's, my anticipation is it won't be too far in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come forward and ask any questions to Mr. Murphy? Seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close the public session for questions. Mr. Afir, you have a closing statement or anything?
We, we rest, but I'll, I'll just state that if we, if the board does act favorably tonight with the application, again, as Mr. Peters and Mr. Murphy stated, we do have to go to the Pine Land Commission, get their approval before we do come back again for site plan approval. There will be, we did agree to some stipulations with regards to the site itself, which I think addresses some of the concerns raised by your professionals as well as the applicant, or the neighbors in the area. We do request that you act favorably tonight.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Ozawa?
So are the containers ever cleaned? Do they clean it once a year, once every three months? Like, I just, so it gets dumped, they're not going to hose it on-site, so is it not clean until it deteriorates?
Well, basically, what happens, it comes up on an angle?
Right.
And they usually shake it, for lack of a better word. And the material comes out, the dust comes out, everything else, and then it's, it's just broom swept, and that's it.
And there's no other way of cleaning? I, I don't know exactly if that, can they be cleaned?
I mean, at the facilities, they, they, where, where you dump, they, they don't have spray down or anything like that. I don't think we'd want to spray them down.
Right, no, but I'm just asking, because I, I don't know anything about these containers.
Yeah.
Do your, do they ever be cleaned in there in lifetime?
No, no, it's a short answer.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just feed off of some of that?
Sure.
So I, I think as I said here, we, we all had dumpsters in front of, in front of homes before, right? And even just seeing them drive, even when they're empty, they're leaking stuff, right? I mean, somebody threw antifreeze in there.
A lot of times, it's, it's water more than anything else, but.
You know, when you say you dump, everything doesn't come out, we know, especially liquid.
Not saying it does.
I guess that's the normal procedure, but it kind of just drives me crazy that there is no watering down at any point.
No.
Okay.
Because then you got the next round of material.
It just goes a little concerning, we know, it drips, we see it.
Yeah.
Whenever it goes through the road.
Yep.
Okay, and then, just one clarifying, so is there just one truck that moves them in and out, or a bunch of trucks?
Just one truck.
Just one, okay, all right. That's it, thank you.
Excuse me, thank you. Any additional questions? We're going to go ahead and, go ahead and open this to the public. If you'd like to come forward and make any comments at this time, it doesn't necessarily have to be questioning Mr. Murphy. You can make any comments you have.
Sir, I'm just going to ask you to state your name again and remind you that you're still under oath.
Yes, Gilbert Harris. I see no tax value in what they're trying to present in a residential area. I just see destruction. Because like he said, those containers do leak, they don't get everything out of them, and they're, they're not cleaned every year. They're never cleaned. They don't get everything out of them, and they're, they're not cleaned every year, they're never cleaned. And like he said, you tilt it up, you shake it, and they don't usually shake all the stuff out of it. And if it's sitting out there and it's raining, it's going into the ground. And people have well water out down there. Because I got a pond in the back that the deer come and drink out of. And I don't mind them coming and drinking that out of it, but I don't want to kill them with something that comes out of those containers. And we don't need, I go, I go to the Ocean County dumps to pick up mulch. And you should see the seagulls and everything running around there. I don't know, they might have more rats, rodents than anything, and I don't know what's going into those containers. And they never will know. And I don't want that same thing around my property, around my grandkids, and I know my neighbor definitely don't want them around his new baby. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to come forward? Seeing no one else come forward, we're going to go ahead and close public session. Board is up for a discussion.
Madam Chair, just a couple of follow-
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
If I could, please have a couple of follow-up questions? Mr. Murphy, can you just please describe exactly how the dumpsters are picked up and rolled off?
At the site or here?
At the site, the maneuverability of the trucks and how they actually come off the trucks.
Sure, basically, there's a tongue that comes down off the back of the truck, it's made specifically for this. Basically, they hook the truck, hook the dumpster, and then basically pull it up onto the back of the truck, and then the truck goes back down level and off it goes.
Now, there's been a lot of comments and concern about leakage. Would the applicant be open to installing some type of impervious surface for the dumpsters?
And certainly, we can, we're looking for use variance, so if that's a requirement of the board, we'd have to certainly-
The thought would be to prevent any, any type of polluted water from infiltrating in the ground. It could be contained and cleaned on-site if there is any spillage. I believe that could address the board's concerns.
Mr. Romar, what would you recommend?
It could be a concrete pad with a small barrier to capture any runoff, and then that runoff can be cleaned up before leaving that area.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
So, I'm going to throw my expertise in here. I have 30 years, I'm a union carpenter, I am a vice president of a commercial construction company. So, for 30 years, I've been dealing with 30-yard containers, and I've seen everything from healthcare, hospital waste, to paint, to anything that people could throw into these containers when they have the opportunity to. Especially hospitals and job sites, people. So, I do appreciate Mr. Harris's concerns and these guys' concerns as far as what's actually in these containers. I do understand how they're cleaned, they're brought, they're tipped over. When they're done, they roll off, they go. I don't see how a container of this size can be rolled off into rocks or stone without the stone just constantly being shifted and moved. It's not a pliable surface, you know what I'm saying? It's, I mean, these are on those metal wheels, so the second they come down, every piece of liquid and everything that was just in that 30-yard dumpster is coming along with it, and it's going right into the dirt because the stone's not going to hold it. So, in light of what our engineers were saying, maybe a catch basin or something. I mean, there's a lot of concerns I'm hearing, I'm hearing since it sounds like even to what Mr. Hudak was saying, how nothing is ever going to be brought back to the yard, yet it sounds, and just going by what I'm hearing, it sounds like there's already stuff there that's been dumped. Whether it was dumped previous, but it's there.
Sure.
So, there's just a lot of things up in the air. It also sounds like it's an exposed yard, so who's to stop anyone from driving by? I live over in Cooks Bridge, I'm the president of the community over there. I have more cars and people come with their trash to dump it in our community because we have dumpsters. And I'll go outside and I'll go, hey, how you doing, what unit are you in? And they're like, oh, what? And I go, right, move it along, and they're there to dump.
We've had issues of dumping on the property, for sure.
So, what's stopping every Tom, Dick, and Harry driving past this place and going, oh, 20, 30-yard containers? I'm going to dump my construction material in there, and who knows what's in there? Paint. So, now when their truck goes to pick this up, and it's been sitting there with rain, and then everything washes out into these poor people's yards and everything, so.
That's why we're going to fence the yard in, so no one can do that.
Okay, I just think there needs to be a step forward to just protect the land.
Sure, I mean, we can certainly do, if the board's, if it's the board's pleasure, we can do the recommendation of doing a concrete pad underneath that for the, for the roll-offs, and basically have a curb around that, so it would catch anything that, and have the opportunity to clean it if anything does leak out of it.
Thank you. And that would be part of the resolution, that no container would ever be parked or rolled off on gravel? It would always be on impervious surface?
Yes. As you remember, this is a bifurcated application, but these issues that are being raised by the board and having to do with the possible leakage of material go to the use, and whether the board would consider that to meet the criteria. So, that's perfectly appropriate as a condition.
I do have some serious concerns about the existing conditions, though. And I'm not prepared to vote on anything without an inspection and a full report given to this board. This is a very sensitive area. And it's part of the Pine Lands, and we have a lot of insensitive areas there, so.
I agree with Mr. Murphy.
So, my, I have a couple of concerns, that was one of my concerns, given the information that's been put on the record, and I understand, Mr. Murphy, that the dumping may not be, understand, we're not saying it's your client. We're stating there's some type of dumping there, we need to get a handle on what's going on out there. Things have already been done in the buffer, yes, I understand you needed variance to get it right, but if you were aware of the buffer, I'm a little concerned as to why it was being done at all. Just my, the other thing, and I'm, thank you for your expertise on these dumpsters, because I have a lot of construction going on around me, and I have like three or four houses that have dumpsters. And one sticks out in particular, and my husband has called the town. Because when they came to dump it, just as you described it, when they lifted it up, all this stuff came flying, and it may have been water from rain, I can't say it wasn't. But my concern when he said that was, what washed out with it? I don't know, I don't know what was in that dumpster, I don't know where it was before. So, what rolled out with it was my question. So, I love Mr. Romar's suggestion, I think that's a great idea, and I think that if this should get to the point that we vote and do approve it, and I say if, that should definitely be a condition. I agree with Mr. Hudak, I think we really need to take the environment into consideration here. I understand why you didn't go to the Pine Lands first. But without an inspection, I too am not really prepared to vote on this, to be honest with you. I think I feel, I need some more information as to what exactly is going on, what needs to be done. How do we say, yes, you can do A, B, and C, and not know what's done already? And that, again, you can all please feel free to feel differently, this is just how I'm feeling.
Sheriff Fieri, in light of the comment of the board, it would be appropriate if you would reach to an adjournment, or not adjournment, to carry this matter for a time sufficient to get there. Oh, I'm sorry. Forgive me.
I agree with what I said. Somebody who comes before the board, and there's going to be controversy over flaming this in a residential area, he would at least clean up his site before he came here. Which shows that the person who is going to be there for many, many years doesn't care about the neighborhood. And second, I just wonder how compatible something like this is with the neighborhood itself. And as of now, I can't see voting to approve this, and hopefully, we get a better report when they do come back.
Mr. Alfieri?
We have no objection to carrying the application.
Okay, so then we're going to carry it, and given the timeframes that we've been given, that should certainly be sufficient time for a report on the conditions at the site. And I can't even remember what, June 4th? Okay, so this, this matter will be carried till June 4th. There'll be no additional notice, so, and I'm looking specifically at the members of the community that were here. Before that time, it's expected that that report on the current site conditions will be done by the zoning department and provided to the board.
Does June 4th work?
June 4th works. Thank you.
Thank you. So, members of the public, as Ms. Sipriani just stated, you won't get any additional notice, but we'll be rehearing, not rehearing, but we'll be hearing additional testimony June 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for your time tonight.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
There you go.